Ready? It's 4:30, folks. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Meyer?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Knapper?
Here.
Reisig?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
Forgot to mention for public information, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted on the East Wall, the Commissioner's Room. If all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to the approval of the agenda, I would request that we move the public comments to just prior to our executive session. I think that's what we had, wasn't it? Let me remind myself.
I believe so.
Yeah, to move to the public comments portion to just before our executive session, if that's all right with everybody. We have some folks that would like to speak to the board. They don't have to wait for us while we're in executive session. Is there any other changes? Anybody has? Kelly, you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Board, anybody? If not, entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as amended.
I move that we move the public comments to right before the executive session.
Is there a second? I'll see. Any discussion? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda?
I do have, with your preapproval, we have reduced one of the claims. I don't, I don't, it's going down no matter what, from what I submitted to you Friday.
Does anybody need any more information on that item? Because we could pull it and then vote on it separately. You're okay with the change? Okay. All right, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Try and get one. There we go. Okay, moving on, we do have a public hearing scheduled at 4:30 to discuss and consider the appointment of trustees of the Hospital Authority Number One, Scotts Bluff County. And so I'll open the public hearing and we'll hear from Tom Polio, please. I know he's here. There he is. Good evening, Tom.
Evening, gentlemen, thank you. We have before you a petition for the appointment of William D. Knapper, Michael W. Downey, and Michael D. Skow as trustees of Hospital Authority Number One of Scotts Bluff County. For the public hearing portion, I would ask for appointment of those three individuals as trustees.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. If there's anybody that wishes to speak in favor or against the information that we just received, anybody wish to speak for or against the information that we just received? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and move on to consider the approval of the resolution, appointment of the trustees to the Hospital Authority Number One.
I move approval of the resolution which appoints William Knapper, Michael Downey, and Michael Skow to the Hospital Authority Number One.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes, please. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is to move into Board of Equalization. I need a motion, please.
I move that we move into the Board of Equalization.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? We close the public hearing.
Who was my second?
Me.
Mark. Record your votes, please. Okay, thank you. Heather, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
All right, so I have four different vehicle exemptions this evening. The first one is for Zion Evangelical Church. This vehicle is a 2015 Ford Transit van that is used for church activities, including pastoral care visits, travel to church-related events, and activities, youth trips, et cetera. It is a tax loss of $54 and it is also, has also been previously exempted.
Okay, we'll do them one at a time. That's all right. Do I have a motion to either accept or deny the motor vehicle exemption as presented?
I'll move to approve the motor vehicle exemption for Zion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, go ahead, Heather.
All right, the second one is one new motor vehicle exemption for Regional West Medical Center. It's a 2014 Ford cargo van ambulance that is used to transport patients. It's a tax loss of $81.
Okay, it's the board's pleasure.
I move that we approve the exemption for a vehicle for Regional West Medical Center.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, next one, Heather.
The next one is for Northfield Assembly of God Church. It's a 2016 Honda HRV, used for church use. It's a tax loss of $91.20 and it also has been previously exempted.
Okay. Entertain a motion for either approval or denial?
I move that we approve the tax exemption for Northfield Assembly of God Church's vehicle.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Heather, next one.
All right, the last one is one vehicle for Capstone. It's a 2000, well, it doesn't have a year. It's a Honda with a tax loss of $85.80. Capstone provides forensic interviews and advocacy services to child abuse victims and their non-offending caregivers. They also facilitate MDT meetings in the Panhandle, as directed by state statute. The vehicle is used to provide travel to forensic interviews in Shadrin Alliance in Sydney. It will also be used to travel to meetings, staff training, state chapter meetings, community presentations, court hearings, and appointments with victims and their families.
Okay, it's the board's pleasure.
Tax loss is how much?
$85.80.
I move approval of the exemption for Capstone.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Record your votes. Okay, next item to discuss and consider, I'm sorry. Okay. Next item to discuss and consider approval of permissive exemption for Monument Valley Robert, how are you?
Very good. Good evening, gentlemen. In your packets, you should have a Form 451 for Monument Valley Hope, which is a charitable organization. They are past the normal deadline without penalty for filing for a permissive exemption, but statute allows if a qualifying organization acquires a property between January 1 and June 30, that we can process it as normal without penalty. So they are a charitable organization that's going to provide housing expense reduction for individuals that are hard up in certain situations where they can either have minimal payment for housing or no payment. I approved it for your consideration.
Okay. What's the board's pleasure?
I move that we approve the exemption for Monument Valley Hope.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So this meets all your criteria or you wouldn't be bringing it to us?
That's correct.
Okay, and I'm just not familiar with them.
So it is a charitable organization. They are not-for-profit. They, by itself, it's not a category, but they are 501(c)(3) and they do not provide alcohol as required by these permissives. You know, the law is less than 20 hours per week, so it'll be zero hours per week for these folks, but they do meet the requirements.
They are 501(c)(3).
That's correct.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, thank you, Robert. Next item to receive the taxless corrections. Everybody's had a chance to look at those. Entertain a motion for either approval or denial?
I move that we approve the taxless corrections.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Record your votes. Okay, next item, next item to discuss, consider approval of over/under report. Oh, sorry, Robert. I should have just stayed there.
So in your packets, you would have received a summary of a over/under report. Since abstract in March, we've been diligently working on picking up a number of building permits that were aged in the assessor's office and we're able to pick up a net value of $3.733 million between abstract and now. And according to Statute 77-1507, the County Board of Equalization may meet at any time for the purpose of assessing omitted real property. So I submit to you for your review and approval.
Entertain a motion for approval or denial, please. Just need one.
I'll make the motion to approve as recommended by the county assessor and I'll have questions when we get a second.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
So this will put properties on the tax rules that were missed previously?
That's correct. So this would be from prior years, so there were building permits open in 2023, 2022. Unfortunately, they were significantly aged. We've been working to catch those up. We will have more to add to the tax rules for 2025, but this is what we could get done in time to do an over/under report and send out notice of valuation changes.
All right, so these are going to be in time for?
For 2024 taxes.
You have an amount?
24 taxes. Do you have an amount on that for up to date, what we haven't been collecting?
This, this particular batch that we've worked on was $3.7 million in valuation that hadn't been picked up for the last few years. And I would say we could very easily, while I don't know the number, we're working on those, could be close to that number again.
Then some of these are deductions as well and so they're over/under report and so some of them you've needed to reduce for whatever information you found or something like that.
Right. Good, good, good question. And that's due to, there may be instances where the assessor's office previously had a higher quality and condition ranking than it should have been after we've conducted our field reviews. There may have been removal of structures, so either the dwelling or improvements have been removed, thus reducing the value of those, as well as conversions, i.e., there may have been a metal building or a improvement may have been classed as a metal building and actually it was a different type of structure. So typically, those are the major categories.
Some are up, some are down.
That's right.
Any other discussion? Record your votes.
Robert, we need the base of all at least to reflect today's date.
Okay.
Okay, next item. Need a motion to come out of Board of Equalization, please.
We got one more thing here.
Oh, I'm sorry, 425 report.
This is actually an update from the last board meeting. I'd submitted two Form 425s for structures that have been destroyed due to calamity. In this case, both of these were fire and the question was brought up whether we could, we being the assessor's office, could take those off the tax rules immediately or whether we needed to wait till any, until any or an all debris was removed. I went back and reviewed the statutes, talked to the state, and talked to other assessors in the Panhandle. And my original statement is correct in the fact that we can and we should reduce those taxes for 2024 as the board previously approved. I think there may have been some confusion on a calamity where there's a fire or there's a flood that partially or completely destroys a structure with someone voluntarily having a building removed. That would require the assessor to go out and do a review and if the building or dwelling was there on January 1, it'd still be taxable for that year, but removed for the following year.
So how does the building inspector get those cleaned up and immediately remove that? What does he use for a tool to get those cleaned up?
I haven't talked with Bill Maven on the county property or the city on the one that's located in town, in Scotts Bluff.
But the statute's clear on that?
Statute's clear from the assessor's.
Okay, what's your information?
I don't know that we have an ordinance for county rural area of cleaning anything.
Yeah. But anyway, I just wanted to give the results of that research since that question was asked at the last board meeting.
Okay, what's the board's pleasure, please?
There's no vote on that. I think there's information.
No, there's no vote. Just information.
All right.
While we're under Board of Equalization, I just had a quick question about the missed properties that had been assessed.
Yes. Yes, sir.
How could we come up with a system that helps us not miss those? You know, if there's communication between your office and Billy's office, does something like that currently exist or was it just something that the assessor's office missed or was it the ball dropped on both ends or?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. There is a process that exists, actually existed prior to me being the assessor. I think we've strengthened that, but we are in contact with Bill Maven's office as well as all of the cities and villages. And on a regular basis, no, no, less than monthly, we're getting building permits sent to us or delivered to us to the assessor's office. The problem that led to this over/under was not the process or the communication from those entities to the assessor's office, it was the assessor's office not keeping current on that pickup work. That's the issue.
That's kind of what I assumed, but thank you.
Anything else?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Robert. Now entertain a motion to remove ourselves from Board of Equalization.
I move we go out of Board of Equalization.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Record your votes. Moving on to general agenda items, discuss, consider approval, resolution for the Monument Marathon. Tom, you're up again.
Thank you. This is the annual resolution that enables the marathon and turns over from the Nebraska Department of Transportation to the county for the date of the event, which is September 28th this year, for the portion of Highway 71 from Wildcat Hills Nature Center down to Sandberg Grove and then the part that's in the, in the city of Gearing, which is north of our street to Old Oregon Trail and from D Street, northern north, to Old Oregon Trail. Takes roughly from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon. We certainly appreciate the county's active participation in the marathon. Sheriff Overman and his people have been absolutely marvelous and we appreciate the county road's help also makes this event for the college possible. Just wanted to ask that you enter this resolution and come out and enjoy watching some people run for the day.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Did you, Tom, did you have a hold harmless agreement with that last year for us on any?
We have an insurance coverage that applies.
Do you have that with you?
Kelly has this.
We have it?
I entertain a motion for either approval or denial, please.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
This is the same form that we approved last year.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Record your votes. Okay, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Next item to discuss, consider approval of SDL. Excuse me?
Give me just a second.
Next item to discuss, consider the special designated license for Broken Arrow Sellers LLC and Hanging Horseshoe Brewing Company. Steve, hi.
Hi, not Steve, sorry. I am representing today Broken Arrow Sellers and because they are not able to be here today, so I'm kind of standing in their face. Katelyn Massey.
So what do you have to tell us about it?
So this SDL is for part of the Cattlemen's Ball that is happening on June 8. It is, these are volunteers that are setting up within the wine tent for the Cattlemen's Ball, which is a fundraiser that benefits cancer research. And the wine tasting, all of these people are donating wine to go part, to go into this wine tent for people to pay to come in and do wine tastings. And then the, the SDL then allows them outside of those tastings that people are already paying for, they can sell their, their product to be able to make a little bit of profit because they are donating so much of their time and their product and stuff outside of that for the Cattlemen's Ball, so.
Ken?
Yes.
Sheriff did indicate that both of these SDLs had no objections to them.
Everything's okay or you checked? All right. What did we approve for you?
That was an SDL for me and I apologize for not being present for that one. That was my fault. But that was an SDL for Papa Moon.
Oh.
So these guys are, Broken Arrow Sellers is coming from Imperial, Nebraska, so it's just quite a bit of a drive for them to come, to be able to get this approval and then to come back again for the actual Cattlemen's Ball that's happening in two weeks, so.
Okay, it's the board's pleasure.
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes. Okay, you're up on the next one, Caitlin.
So again, this is, again, for the Cattlemen's Ball, this is just another volunteer that is donating their time and their product and stuff for this fundraiser and it's again just kind of asking for an SDL so that they can sell their product if anybody would like to take any of that, like their wine or anything, home at the end of the night.
Need a motion for either approval or denial?
Has that been discussed?
Yes, sir.
Both of those are both?
I move we approve it.
Have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Record your votes. Not ready, not ready yet. Okay.
But now I am.
Now you are. Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Next item to discuss, confirm recommendation of Capital Improvement Grant for Five Rocks Amphitheater. Brenda?
Okay, I'm on my portable computer office today, so I don't do too good at it, so bear with me. I'm more of a pen and paper kind of.
You know, that's like a waitress at a restaurant. They say, this is my first night.
Yeah.
So don't expect a lot out of me.
Well, I can't write this thing very good, but yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so first of all, like I always give is my, my little disclaimer explaining that all of the tourism funds that we use for our projects are collected by lodging properties and they collect lodging tax and that's what we use for both of our capital improvement and marketing grants and so only people staying in Scotts Bluff County pay into that fund. So I am here tonight because Five Rock Amphitheater is seeking $100,000 for improvements needed to upgrade the outdoor space. Now, the first phase of the project is two very important and probably the most important parts of the entire project. And the first one is it is going to include improvements to the pavilion area and what that is going to do is allow for more vendors and better connectivity between Kahuna Park and the vendor area. But most important, it is going to keep the ADA accessibility compliance up to date. And this capital improvement project is very important to this community. You've all heard the saying that, you know, you only get one chance to make a first impression and oftentimes people coming to this community, that is their first stop. So it is very important that Five Rocks Amphitheater is well-maintained and very inviting to the people coming in to our community. There have been multiple events that have utilized Five Rocks, just to give you an idea of how it affects tourism. The first is the Rubidu Rendezvous, Monument Marathon, Horizon Music Festival, Oregon Trail Days events are held up there, Father's Day Classic, and then they've also hosted numerous special events such as concerts, the eclipse, it was a hit that day for sure, high school, regional cross-country. And the committee talked in great length about how well they appreciate the fact that the city of Gearing maintains its facilities and they don't let things go into a state of dilapidation where thousands of dollars are needed for upgrades. They take care of things right away, so less money is needed for these large projects. where thousands of dollars are needed for upgrades. They take care of things right away, so less money is needed for these large projects. Five Rocks Amphitheater is an extremely important venue option for people building events and doing large projects in our community. And meeting the A D A compliance is just one of those necessary steps and services that are needed for visitors of all types. The Visitors Committee in attendance vetted and thoroughly went through the application and um is seeking your recommendation for acceptance of the project.
Okay.
And they have two representatives from Five Rocks Amphitheater, Carla's here and also Annie, and they can go over a lot of the detailed questions and also the map that was in your packet.
Okay, do you want to speak now and then we'll either entertain a motion for denial or approval?
Yes. Excuse me. All of you, I'm sure, are familiar with Five Rocks Amphitheater. It's one of our main tourism attractions for the area. We use it for not only events for people for tourism, but also events like graduation this last weekend. Unfortunately, one of the big shortcomings, in my opinion, of the facility is the A D A accommodations. Right now, we currently do not have fully accommodating paths to it. For A D A, we're supposed to have fully accommodating paths to every portion of an event, so that's to A D A. From the parking, to the seating, to the bathrooms, to the food trucks, all of it has to be tied together so that people can get there safely. So that it, we're not excluding people, whether it's during graduation or Oregon Trail Days or any of those other events. We need to make sure that we're accommodating anyone who might want to attend. And right now, we don't have that currently. So what we're looking at is kind of a three-phase plan that you should have in front of you. And the first phase is what we're applying for funds for tonight. That would add a pathway that goes from the current A D A parking area, which is just north of the stage. And that's currently a level surface, it's milling. And that would provide a pathway that would bring people up to the pavilion area, up to the area where we do the food trucks. We do have some A D A seating up at that top level. We're going to add additional A D A seating within the amphitheater itself. It also will add A D A pathways that will go to a new food truck area. So all of the food trucks would be on a paved surface and then that surface would be wide enough that people could have, get to any of those on a wheelchair. In addition, it will tie in those back bathrooms. We have a set of bathrooms back there that currently are not easy to get to. That area in between the pavilion and the bathrooms is fairly eroded, it's a rough surface. It's even honestly for people who are fully, fully.
Are you talking about the bathrooms behind the stage?
No, no, the ones, so the pavilion has some bathrooms in them and then there's the second set of bathrooms behind that. But I think a lot of people don't even realize they're there sometimes. They kind of feel separate from the rest of it. They're not the easiest to get to, so we're going to tie those in as well so that all of that will be fully accessible. Now, that's phase one. Phase two, and this may be several years down the road, but phase two would be rather than parking everyone at the bottom of the amphitheater and making them get to the top of it, we would move our A D A parking to the top side just to make it a little bit easier that if they want to start at that higher level, they could stay at that higher level the entire time and it would be much easier for everyone. And then a third phase, if the rest of this all goes really well, would add additional A D A parking. We are looking at adding some drop off and pickup areas as well because even if people aren't needing it for A D A reasons, I know for myself, you know, when you've got kids and the stroller and everything else, sometimes it's really nice to be able to be dropped off at the front gate and then have someone go park. So we're looking at those farther down the road, but for the time being, we feel like this first phase is going to be the most important. And the other side of that too is we're starting to see some bigger events as well. So I know we've got a music festival coming up this year that's going to be using that area just to the east of the amphitheater. There's a really nice slope there. They're looking at putting a stage at the bottom and doing the event there. The nice thing about this is this food truck area that we're adding and we're going to be adding grass and trees and making it really nice and comfortable. That'll work whether the event is in the main amphitheater or whether it's to that, to the east in that other area. So that's what we're looking at. It's going to be about two hundred thirteen thousand is, and that's rough, that's conceptual. We haven't finalized everything. We've got a pretty good idea on grades, but we haven't, we're not to, we don't have bid documents yet. But that's our estimate right now and so we're asking for a hundred thousand dollars to help offset that. Now, we're also looking at applying for occupation tax and looking at applying for some city tourism funds. But if we were able to obtain this hundred thousand dollars of county tourism funds, that would really help us get there on the funding side of things.
Okay, thank you. Carla, do you have anything to add?
I think she, both of them did pretty well. Um, the only thing I will add, and Annie alluded to it, um we're seeing more and more events that are growing um that use Five Rocks Amphitheater and are using the connectivity between Kahuna Park and Five Rocks proper. And all of these improvements in addition to the A D A upgrades are really going to uh create a much better flow and connectivity between those two facilities, which are one.
Where is Kahuna Park?
That's that area to the east.
Oh, where the car show is?
Yes, yes.
The chili cook-off on the.
Never heard it called Kahuna Park.
That's its name, that's a long story, that's, that's for, that's for another evening.
That's okay, I don't. That's fine, Carla. Okay. Very good. Uh, what's the board's pleasure?
I, I'd like to discuss a bit more.
Well, we could get a motion in a second, then we can discuss it some more if you like, unless you have questions for these gals. Charlie, whatever you want to do.
We can discuss after motion.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion then, either approval or denial? Anybody?
I'm interested in what the questions are.
Yeah, me too.
Well, we don't, you can vote your, whatever it is. I'm just trying to stay and do it procedurally, that's all. I'll make the motion for approval. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll make the second.
Thank you. Now it's, now it's open for discussion.
So the city of Gearing hasn't committed any funds yet?
So this will be budgeted for the following fiscal year. It's, we're, our fiscal year starts October first. So the thought is that pending the results of this, that'll let us know what dollar amount we need to come up with and then we would budget it. And I think it would probably be a fall project that we would have our budgets in place and be able to start October first, which actually works well with our event schedule.
So the budget, so that you're, you're, you mentioned Gearing Occupation Tax. But that wouldn't be a budget item, right? That would be a, a separate grant process?
It's, yeah, it's still city of Gearing funds. There's a certain amount that's set aside for city facilities.
But it would have to go through the, the standard grant process or something.
Okay, so is Gearing going to use any money out, out of their general fund for this?
Not on a general fund. It would be funds that are dedicated to tourism.
Okay.
Out of the city budget, but it's not general fund money. It's dedicated money, Fund one oh nine, which is for tourism. That would be where the additional funds would come from.
That comes from your lodging taxes.
That come, no, that comes from percentage of the city sales tax, which are dedicated to tourism.
Does your, does your Keno, any, any of those Keno funds apply to this?
We're not planning on applying for Keno funds at this point. Keno just did a pretty large project for the city with the pickleball courts and that took a pretty good chunk out of their.
Can you give me, give me your number again?
Two hundred thirteen thousand.
Two thirteen, how much are you asking from private donations?
We have not asked for any private donations at this point.
So just, just so everyone's clear, there is a, there is a stipulation in the statutes that we're not supposed to use a lodging tax on city-owned properties. We have made some exceptions in the past, like at Twenty-three Club and Cleveland Field where, you know, the city owns the land, but the organization owns the structures. And over here, we're a hundred percent city of Gearing. And then, you know, Twenty-three Club was mostly, I'd say it's almost seventy percent um private, privately raised funds. Gearing did their ballpark uh by raising property taxes, I believe. Um, and um, what are, what are some other things that we've done that are, that's on city ground? That just, did we do anything at the soccer field yet?
No, I mean, they, no, they've applied three times, but we're waiting for the city of Scottsbluff to respond on that project. So we will, um, most likely.
So I, I, there's an example of maybe why we shouldn't wait. You know, see what the city of Gearing is gonna do. Um, I, you know, if, you know, we've asked, we've tried to do stuff at the soccer field and they've, you know, the city's backed out on that. So, you know, they've asked three times and the city hasn't come through on that. I feel a little differently about this one and, and Gearing, Gearing's commitment to this is probably greater than Scottsbluff's commitment to the soccer fields. So that's a, that's a positive for this project. I think it's tremendous. It look, what I can imagine here looks pretty, pretty impressive. I would like to see some other, you know, do you have like an artist's rendition of what this is gonna look like or a?
No, we're designing.
Can you ask A I to do that for you or, yeah?
It's all money.
Yeah.
And learns are very expensive.
Okay, but this, if I, if I, if I, these are going to be vendor spots?
No, that would be future.
Oh, that's A D, okay. I thought this was like a overhead pavilion type.
There's some vendor spots or vendor parking is what she has, right?
Yes.
There's vendor parking, you can, and they can roll right up to the vendors.
Yeah, the food truck area would be, there's only about five spots. Um, well, you could fit more than that, but we've got kind of five spots shown on the plan that would run right through here. It would be one way in, one way out. So the food trucks would pull up on this little strip that runs between pavilion and the bathrooms and they would park on one side so that everyone could get to it.
And this is, this is those other bathrooms here?
Yes.
And that's the covered, the covered spot right now where the picnic tables are?
No, so that.
Yes, there's covered picnic tables.
There are, but he's pointing to the back.
Well, you're on the back part, Charlie.
Yes, so then there's the pavilion that's just to the west of that, the larger building.
This one?
Yeah. That's existing, that's where the covered picnic tables are.
Okay.
So I have a, um, a question. So it's not the seating that's drawn in there, back there in the back, it's not that. But it's the stuff primarily to the east.
Uh, and the vendor area. And so tell me again the overall cost?
Two hundred thirteen thousand.
That's for the first phase, yes.
All right, first phase meaning that east.
The, yeah.
All right, so, and you're asking us to commit a hundred? And um, I guess the only thing might um, uh, could be part of our motion is um agreeing to a certain amount contingent upon the city's participation of such and such. And then that way we could kind of set it in motion and say, hey, we're willing to do this if you're willing to, to find the rest.
That would be very helpful for us in our budgeting, yes.
How would you guys feel about splitting it three ways and get some private contribution in that? I, I think, well, these projects need a little more skin in the game than just county and city. I think, you know, we can't jump up to every project that comes across this desk. That's, we don't have that kind of funds. We kind of need to smear that out a little bit and everybody partake a little, you know, so we can use those funds for other projects. Lisa's got a lot of, I believe so. We've got a lot of projects that come through that, you know, need, need funding. I'd like to see some local contrib, or you know, some private contribution in this. I, if we split that three ways, we'd get seventy-one thousand is still a pretty good donation.
If we done, whatever the number is, if we did something contingent upon, it's almost like a challenge grant of some kind where it says, hey, we're willing to put this kind of money in if you'll get this much money.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
The um, oh, I forgot what I was gonna say. Oh, the capital improvement grant is, or the capital improvement funds are approximately two hundred s, twenty-five thousand dollars a year, two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year?
Yeah, I mean, it's an estimate, but that's what I've been adding annually, just because, you know, right now, you know, things are kind of tough. So I've been kind of shooting a little bit low um when I do the budget, but yeah, everything that I've guessed in the past three years, amazingly, we've met those goals. And so, I mean, this year I would probably keep it at about the same. But honestly, we haven't had that many capital improvement grants that are qualified. We might have a lot of projects in the county, but it has to be tourism related in order to use our capital improvement funds. And we have plenty of money, we have plenty of money for this project. And um, and still committing what we did to the legacy capital improvement and also to go back and pitch in for the soccer. So it's, it's not an issue with the tourism funds.
How much does the, um, does that fund bring in a year, did you say?
Well, total, we, it's really anywhere about two hundred thousand. I mean, it's.
You know, it isn't so much that you have the funds on hand. It, when you bring in local contribution, it shows the interest in it. You know, people, you get some skin in the game, people will work with you. And I think bringing some people on board with that helps do these projects. I worked on several projects in Morrow and we always used a lot of local contribution or local help or free labor. You can, you can get contributions a lot of ways. I mean, you could, if the contractor would do some of the work in lieu of, uh, you know, we can get that a third and a third and a third. It, I, I think it works a lot better bringing people on board and at least they come and they say, hey, I helped do this and I did that and let's go to the party.
So we, the, that's something for the visitors here to consider because they're the.
Is there any other discussion?
I think I'd uh vote to deny this request and, and move, and then, and then later move to table it um for, for more discussion. I, I think it's a good project. I just, I'd like, I like the idea of, you know, more skin in the game with, from the community. You know, it does show, it does show that it's something the community wants. It's not something that's.
Not we're forcing some money.
Not forcing, I mean, that's, that's how Twenty-three Club did their project, you know, and it just, it just makes sense that, that we get a more buy-in before we throw half of our c- capital improvement budget at this and pay pretty, basically fifty percent of what the city of Gearing is planning to spend on their property. That's, that's where I'm at with it.
How much did the city of Scottsbluff do for the zoo project, remember? I don't think anything. I don't, I don't know that they did, for, for the work that they were asking for. And I know it's been a while.
Yeah.
And that was fifty thousand a year for three years?
Three years.
For three years. I don't know that the city contributed anything towards that particular project. I know that they were doing other things within the zoo because it's a city, you know, city-owned operation.
Sure, yeah, I mean, that was a multiple-phase project too. And so different people assumed different roles in each phase.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that deal, you know, the city was already compu- contributing three hundred thousand dollars a year to the operation of the zoo. And I, you know, that was well before um Mark and I were on the board and um I thi- I think if, if it was to be done again today, I don't think that zoo project would go. I mean, that was, that was completely out of, not in, not in line with the current tourism, you know, adj, uh, plan, you know, and I don't know how this fits into our, you know, sports plan. I know we have some sporting events up there, but um, you know, we, we pay a pretty penny to have that sports consultant here and, you know, I, I don't know that he would, that sports consultant would tell us to, to go do this project when the soccer field needs lighting and Cleveland Field still needs stuff and um, you know, it's kind of like we're, we're skipping over, you know, the recommendations of a, of our, of our consultant there.
Five Rocks Amphitheater is cons, was included in that uh huddle-up plan as a facility of consideration for sports and all other aspects of tourism.
And did, did he mention what sort of upgrades need to happen there?
No, which he didn't for any facility.
Okay, any other discussion?
I'd like to, I'd really like to see his vote no on this and get some more contribution step up.
When it comes time to vote, vote whatever your conscience tells you and then we can move on from there. Any other discussion? Record your votes, please.
And the motion is to approve it.
The motion to approve, just what they just submitted, yes.
I'm gonna vote no for.
You just voted yes.
It, that's not an indication of what your vote was.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's just that you did vote.
Okay.
Ready?
Go for it.
And my issue would be, I'm okay with a, an amount, um. I, uh, would like the story of that challenge thing with it, rather than it just be a hundred thousand. Um, uh, something contingent and where exactly that's at, whether it's a.
Okay.
Seventy, 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 or eighty, 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 or.
Yeah.
Do you wanna put that in the form of a motion?
I'd be okay with a third and a third and a third.
Somebody wanna put that in the form of a motion, so?
Well, Charlie had a call.
I, I do, we'll just, you know, ask you guys to come back, you know, in two weeks or a month and, and. And, and see what kind of. Appetite there is out there for, for additional funds. You know, maybe, I mean, cause if we, if we promise a third, a third and a third and they can't come up with that other third.
That third doesn't help.
That doesn't really help, that, that ties our hands, but if we can, you know, so if, if, if the appetite's not there for, for private funding, then, then maybe we just need to. Look at the whole thing from a different angle, um. I, I, I guess, it's, I mean, to make a decision on a hundred thousand dollars here in fifteen minutes is, is. Something this board has, has chosen not to do re- more recently, um, on a lot of different topics. So, um, you know, whether it be, you know, granting, um, permissive exemptions or, or, um, you know. Anything we tax, you know, we, any, anytime something comes to us, we, we have kinda taken, you know, more recently in the last nine or six or nine months. We've decided we wanna take more time to have the information in front of us. And if that, if that just means, uh, you know, there's more discussion, then I think that's, that's what we need.
Okay.
So my, my motion would be to table it.
So we have a motion to table? Is there a second on the motion?
All seconded.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes.
I don't have that on there.
Excuse me, why don't you just call the roll then?
So, if she's not ready and we have a motion in a second, can I have a little more discussion?
Sure, sure, absolutely.
So I would be in favor, um. Ladies, I would, um, Carla and Annie and, um.
Brenda.
Brenda, the. I would certainly be in favor if you brought something back and we were looking in that seventy, eighty, maybe up to ninety thousand. Um, with a contingency of some kind of a match. And then, um, I think one of the things that needs to be put to that though, to help alleviate some of your concerns, is some kind of timeline. Because that way, if we're gonna tie up ninety thousand dollars or whatever, um, that there be some kind of timeline for the matching part to be met. And then, um, that way, we wouldn't be sitting on that for a long, long time. So if you guys are able to bring something back like that, I would be willing to take a serious look at approving something like that.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Knapper?
Yes.
Reisig?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Meyer?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. You got your orders. Thanks, girls, appreciate it. Okay. Uh, next item is discuss or receive update on UNL program, Jackie.
Brenda, Brenda had something.
What's that?
Tourism proclamation.
Well, I only have one item from.
Oh, I have.
Just the, the improvement grant. Did you have something else, Brenda?
No.
Okay.
Disregard.
Okay. Alright, uh, Rob, do you wanna come up also?
I'll let Jackie go first.
Okay, very good.
Hmm? Um, you can use this thing. I think we have a pusher. Okay, still good. There you are. There you go.
So, I realized, um. That we come in quarterly. We don't always come in on a regular basis. You don't see me always, except for Commissioner Moon. Um.
We're having a little trouble with that, Jackie.
Can you hear me better?
Yes.
Alright.
We, we can hear you fine, it's the folks in the back.
Alright, so I thought that I would start with another set of questions about the poverty simulation in our newsletter, so I thought I'd come in and share that with you. Um, but I'll share you a little bit about myself, um. For those of you that don't really know me, I'm an extension educator for the University of Nebraska-Lincoln. I'm an early childhood educator. Um, I have a master's degree in education. Um, prior to joining extension, I was a seventeen-year, um, educator for classical public schools in the classroom. And I was an English language learner teacher, um, and I will complete in July nineteen years at the university. Um, find it rare we ha- don't have that longevity. I think it's typical in my generation these days. Um, to see someone in, uh, with a, a job for that long time, um. This, I'm a member of a statewide team, um, this is, this is, um, part of my team. Um, we deliver this primarily the same programming across the state. Um, to both inner city and to the most rural areas, um, in, across Nebraska. And here I do get all the way up to Sioux County and Valentine to, um, offer training. Um, I serve the southern panhandle, um, but right now that we don't ha- we have a, a position in the northern panhandle, I'm fulfilling that position. Um, so, my programming. Um, serves anyone who works with young children, early childhood educators, early childhood directors and their staff, home providers and including families. Um. I rarely advertise for my programming, um, agencies and directors come to me, um, with requests for programming. Last year, Morrow Public Schools approached me, they wanted to learn more about family engagement, um, through a training that we offer, um, called Block Party. It's STEM, um, science, technology, engineering and mathematics and family engagement programming for families of preschoolers. Um, so here's where we start, the, I start with these questions, um, for the poverty simulation. And the poverty simulation comes out of Community Action Poverty, it's a poverty simulation. That was developed by Missouri Association for Community Action, and it's a tool for helping communities understand the realities of poverty. And this is one of the first questions, um, I start with is, um. What is poverty? What does poverty look like to you? What experience do you have with poverty? So I'm gonna pose that question to all of you. Any of those questions, if you'd like to respond?
I'd say poverty is struggle.
A struggle?
It's, um. It's wondering where your next meal's coming from, it's wondering, um, if you're gonna be able to pay the electricity bill.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Um. And, and, and the effect it has on, on someone's. Mental status is, 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 is very stressful.
Can impact mental health.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I could tell you what experience I've had with poverty.
Okay.
I lost my dad when I was four years old. I had. Seven brothers, seven boys in our family. My mother worked two jobs in order to put food on our table. She refused to take welfare. This was back in the early fifties. And, and there, I know what poverty is.
First hand. Thank you for sharing that.
I, I grew up in a nice home, had everything afforded to me that I wanted. When I was nineteen, my dad said. Here's a, here's a bus ticket, or you can go get help. From getting help, I went to a halfway house, ate ramen noodles, drove a eighty-four Oldsmobile, um. Ate, ate, um, spring rolls off of plates that were left by people who ate in the restaurant that I waited tables at, um.
So you also have first, first-hand experience?
Yeah.
Get me your, go ahead. Anyone else?
Well, my dad died when I was fifteen and, uh, back then, I, I didn't view myself as poor, uh, in poverty, I mean, everybody in my neighborhood. Was very low income, you know, and, uh, but I've worked a lot with, uh, people in transition. Whether it be mental health or poverty or, uh, sex abuse, I work a lot with those as a chaplain, so I see it every day.
So you have that firsthand, in addition to working with people living in poverty?
But back then, we didn't view it as being poor, everybody was the same boat, so I didn't view it as being poor. Just, I had to make some decisions in my life, so I made those decisions to better myself, so to speak.
Right.
So I would only say that, um. Yeah, and I grew up in a situation where we were very, I'll call it low income. Um, but I didn't recognize it at the time. I recognize it today a little more as to where we were at in things, but. Um, but I didn't recognize it at the time. The, um, but more importantly, I, I think through, um, some of our work and some of our business things that we do. We're dealing with, um, people that are, have lots of kids and or. Um, they're in a difficult situation and working either through, um, CAP one is part of the help that we, um, work with or. Um, Housing Authority or some of those, but, um, by doing that, we see some people that are in real. Dire straits and I, I suspect that when we talk about poverty, there's some kind of a percentage of average income or something that would. Identify poverty, I don't know what that is.
I heard the government has guidelines.
Yeah, but, um, I can see the hurt, as I guess was described some from people. Um, that, that we end up doing business with, that, um, not knowing those percentages, but I know they're hurting and that's poverty to me.
Right.
And I took a, a training session one time and, uh. We, uh, learned what is my world compared to others' worlds. It was based on your income level. What does a well-off person's world look like? Where do they shop? What's their neighborhood look like? What kind of stores are close to their neighborhoods? What does the world look like for a middle-income person? And then what does the world look like for those in poverty? And your neighborhoods here, you have Dollar General, you have tattoo shops, you got liquor stores, I mean, uh. You know where, which churches, which organization gives out meals in the evenings. You know where you go to get free clothing. Those people in the higher income bracket, if all of a sudden they were in that lower income bracket, they would not survive. They don't know, they don't have the skills. To navigate the world that, that the poverty people live in. And so it's quite eye-opening to view what my world is now compared to what was sixty years ago.
Alright.
The difference.
And I, I, you know, in addition to that, you know, those areas sometimes they, they have what we call food deserts. Um, where people don't have grocery stores within walking distance, especially if they don't have transportation, so that's a real issue as well, so. You know, they're high-calorie foods, fast food kind of things you can buy at Dollar Generals and whatnot. So, thank you for sharing that, um, I also come from poverty. Um, I didn't know I was in, living in poverty because my basic needs were met. I was fed, I was clothed. Um, my mother often made our clothes, I'm, I'm one of eight, I'm the youngest of eight, so, yeah, I do know. Um, but my parents both came from extreme poverty. They both grew up during the depression, they had food insecurity, they'd often went without. Um, so, because of that, they, my dad was, um, worked. He, he was the person with the job, my mom stayed home. They cut a lot of corners, we went without a lot of things, but we always had food. We didn't have what a middle-class family had on their table, but we had food. Now I have two children, they were raised middle-class. And, um, their attitudes started becoming very, um, how would I say, very, uh, stereotypical, they started making judgments. About people living in poverty, and so I had a long conversation with their kids, we had interesting, uh, dinnertime discussion. But in our home, a requirement is if you live in our house, you have to do volunteer work. You have to go out and, and part of their work, um, during the holidays was to volunteer for Kaplan. And, uh, pass out Christmas gifts and so that really was an eye-opener for my kids. It was something that I felt necessary for them to really connect. Um, with others and not, and to help understand where people were coming from. So let me get moving here. So I did, I had my slides backwards, um. So, comes from Missouri Community Action, so, um. Poverty's this, the term poverty refers to the state or condition in which people or communities lack the financial resources and other essentials. Um, the inability of a person to access the basic needs for survival. The term poverty refers to the state or condition in which people or communities lack the financial resources. People in poverty may go without proper housing, clean water, healthy food and medical attention. You've all described that in your stories. Um, so there's six types of poverty, situational pri- poverty, which, um, and this is not limited to this. So is a state of deprivation that results from a specific circumstance that occurs when a person experiences a sudden. And drastic decrease in their financial situation or resources. This could be the result of unemployment, illness or divorce, the death of a loved one, the loss of housing or another crisis. So they, things were going along fine and then boom, something happened. Um, I would add medical bills. Sometimes people find themselves, um, without health insurance and one medical bill can send a family spiraling and into homelessness. And then there's generational poverty. Um, this poverty, this type of poverty refers to families living in poverty for at least two generations, so there's a cycle. Um, so I talked about my family, my parents lived in poverty, as did their parents, but we broke the cycle. So there was something intentional that my family did to help break that cycle, we'll share later. Um, absolute poverty, this one's a little more difficult to understand, but the United Nations, um. Defines absolute poverty as follows, a condition characterized by severe deprivation of basic human needs, including food. Safe drinking water, sanitation facilities, health, shelter, education and information. It depends not only on the income, um, but also on access to services. And each country will, um, define it differently, but today in western econ- economies, we may expand this definition to include food. Shelter, electricity, cooking, access to basic healthcare. Um, often, you know, in other countries, we have refugees that are displaced, um, from their homes or their country, et cetera, due to war or. Or, um, and living, and living in camps. So relative, um, poverty is defined as a condition where household income is a certain. So relative, um, poverty is defined as a condition where household income is a certain per- percentage below median incomes. This could be set at fifty or sixty percent of the median incomes, I'll tap the panel about. Um, urban poverty. Cities with complex combinations of chronic and acute stressors unique to urban areas. Um, rural poverty refers to situations where people living in non-urban regions are in a state or condition of lacking the financial resources, essentials for living. They may have difficult accessing support or services. So basically, there's an income component, or, or, um, they lack, um, services or basic needs. So here's the federal, um, poverty guidelines. So a family, a person, um, or a family and a household of one, fifteen thousand or less is under, is poverty. The median level is fifteen thousand. But less than that is poverty. So a family of eight, median level is fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty, so anything below that is poverty level. There's also another, um, chart that talks about being fifty percent below poverty level. A hundred percent below poverty, poverty level. And that chart is used by various organizations to determine, um, services. Um, Head Start uses one, um, and, and multiple other things, not just that, um, that criteria. There are other things that they utilize to determine, um, programming. So family often, families often lack education. Um, so one thing, um, as a result of our research and throughout history, is that Head Start programs were developed for families living in poverty specifically to help, um, primarily to get those children to college. I'm happy to report to you, I was one of the first, I participated in one of the first Head Start programs that was started here in the Panhandle, and it didn't turn out so bad. Um, so here's some quick facts. Nebraska poverty rate is ten point eight percent. Child poverty rate is thirteen percent. Senior poverty rate, seven point two percent. Women in poverty, ten percent, ten point nine percent. Percent of single-parent families with related children that are below tw- poverty is twenty-seven percent. Um, poverty in Scottsfield County. So twelve point five percent of people live below poverty level. Thirty point six percent are low-income population, so this is the income, this refers to that chart. Is two, that's two hundred percent are under the poverty level. Twenty-one point five percent, age six to eleven, live below the poverty level. And fourteen point seven, point seven percent, age under five, or five below and below are at poverty level. So here's-
Jackie, how, how do you determine somebody five years old if they are in poverty level? They, they have no income?
It's, um, determined by the census and what parents report on the census. And, and what they report, number of children in their families. The children don't report or encompass the children living in poverty.
So it's a family statistic, right, rather than a, a child, or whatever?
Correct.
Okay. It's a little misleading when you first look at it.
Yeah. It is. So common myths. All poor people are in poverty long-term. Sometimes it's situational, and, and, you know, we get a lift-up, or an agency can help on a family, um, and they can get themselves back on their feet. Um, all poor people receive government assistance. Not true. You said it yourself, your mom refused, um, to get assistance. Um, poverty is an inner-city problem. It's not, it's also people in rural areas, farm families, um, suffer from poverty. Poverty is unique to certain ethnic groups, it's across the board. Some, um, ethnic groups are higher than, than others, but, um, it impacts all people. So, here's the poverty simulation. This is how it works. Um, the simulation involves participants, um, to take on roles of members of up to twenty-six families. They're all facing a variety of challenges, but typical circumstances. And here's a packet that I give and I'll send around, you can look at them. You can look at, uh, the scenarios, the makeup of the family. Um, that, um, when people walk in, they're assigned to family grouping. And, um, so to start the simulation exercise, these families given a card, explaining their unique circumstances. Then the family's task is to provide food, shelter, and other necessities by ass- assessing various community resources during the course of a, of fifteen, a fifteen minutes, uh, for four weeks. It's a four-week, it covers four weeks, but each week lasts fifteen minutes. Oops. So, um, we have a community resource packets. So description of the roles, community resource with some responsibilities, possessions, name tags are in there, and other resources. So here's some of the scenarios. Um, a single parent with limited resources and no transportation must find a way to get to work and get their child to daycare. An elderly person must find a way to pay for both utilities and medication. A young adult must care for siblings while their parent is incarcerated. An elderly couple must raise their grandchild and deal with their own health and employment issues. So those are some of the scenarios. So the instructions are to su- survive one month in poverty. Each month is four, contains four weeks. Each week is fifteen minutes long, each weekend is three minutes long. So, um, around the room, the perimeter of the room, the families are in the, in the center of the room with ta- chairs, uh, where they sit together. And then the perimeter of the room, um, consists of twenty volunteers. Um, preferably people who have experience with poverty. They play the roles of resources, resource providers in the community. And this allows individuals to have firsthand knowledge of poverty, bring their perception to the exercise and and to, on the right there, you see the various, um, resources that are available. Um, at my most recent poverty simulation, I invited employees from our local, um, community action partnership. I, I brought in half of the, um, the twenty volunteers. Um, and those individuals were employed for Kaplan, but also had lived experience living in poverty. So they were able to bring that experience, um, to, to their role. And I asked them to sh- help people understand, um, how you're made to feel when you have to ask for, for resources. Um, sometimes it's blatant, sometimes it's not. Um, so that was their role. Um, this, this whole simulation lasts about three hours. Um, and the timeframe includes an introduction and a, and briefing by the facilitator, a simulation exercise, and a guided debriefing with each participant and volunteers. They share their observations and insights from the activity. So at the end, we just kind of debrief altogether as a group. Um, my observation, and then this is just one thing that I always see in the simulation, is, um, when they, after our first and second, um, week, I have, um, the people that run the grocery store? Say, um, you, you need to eat? I only had- Three of her people come to purchase food. Um, but that is a reality. Um, people do have food insecurity, and I think that's the piece that really correlates nicely with reality. Um, so as a result of food insecurity in communities, one of the solutions in our federal government and communities have come up with is we have free and reduced lunch, um, for s- children that go to school that are, that meet the guidelines. We have summer food programs, um, for children, um, at our schools. Um, in addition, children, um, living in poverty read less often, or are read too. So Commissioner Knapper, you have young children. You read to your children daily, nightly?
Yes.
So that's something that doesn't always happen. So we have summer reading programs. So out of this research, these types of programs have come about to help families. And the, and the purpose for this program is for, at the end, we have folks talk about, okay, what do you, what can you do personally? What can we do as a community, um, to invest and help, um, people living in poverty? What can we do in our neighborhoods? Um, children living in poverty witness more traumatic events, um, that impact their brain development. You know, their cortisol levels get raised, and they have that flight or fight reaction. Um, so if your cortisol levels are constantly heightened, something happens at school, they may react, um, in an appropriate manner because those high cortisol levels and are, are racing through their bodies. Um, so then we have some behavioral issues. We might have a kid reacting just because, like I said, this is what they, they might see someone at home. Uh, they might experience some abuse, someone's getting abused, and their, um, body is racing with high cortisol levels, which is unhealthy for a young child. So we need to be aware of the trauma that has created that. And so a child that's worried about, am I gonna have food? Is there gonna be a fight at home? Is there gonna be something that's gonna impact me getting to s- getting my eight hours of sleep tonight? Um, is not ready to learn. Um, and sometimes, you know, these issues cause long-term mental health issues. Um, so here's some insights. Um, from my evaluations. What insights did you glean from the simulation? It's hard to get help, basic needs have to be ignored, children and adults suffer. This has made me more sensitive to our families and Head Start and the challenges they face. Frustration and stress negatively impact efforts to gain assistance. Getting immediate assistance is a very, is very limited, must wait even if homeless, homeless. So it takes a while, sometimes you get resources. Offering resources and directing those who need resources to the right place. So, you know, educators, you know, if you recognize if there's a family that comes to you and says, you know, I need, I need some help, they're confiding in you, where can you send them? Being aware of the resources that are available. So what action steps will you take to reduce poverty barriers in your community? Be an advocate, don't make assumptions, don't treat them differently. Educate myself about resources and help others. It's not easy. Offering resources and directing those who need resources to the right place. Offering resources and directing those who need resources to the right place. Oh, I did that twice. I read it twice. Okay.
Jackie, so I think part of what you're describing and part of what I seen in these packets, you know, we talk in our office sometimes about, um, some of the people we deal with are twenty years old, twenty-five. Sometimes they're well-grown adults, but they're needing basic life one-on-one skills. And, um, I mean, what seems to be elementary to many people is not that to many people in those poverty issues.
True.
And we, I've talked about that recently to some people. I've talked to a couple of doctors and professional people about it recently. And I said, what? And, you know, the primary thing that was spoken about was a breakdown in the family unit. And I don't know whether that's fully correct or not, but I do know that if we had a family unit, I think you had one, that was helpful. And, um, I had one that was helpful. And, um, there's many people that come out of situations where their family unit is not helpful.
True.
And it's amazing to me, I mean, I was in a session one time and we were trying to teach a nineteen-year-old, okay, you, you have a job that starts at eight o'clock this morning, you have to get up at seven. It would be best if you took a shower, brushed your teeth, combed your hair, put your clothes on decent clothes, and be ready to go to work. And, um, I was, I, my mind was blown by that. I couldn't believe that that needed to be done, but it did. They were totally and completely oblivious to those basic one-on-one life skills. And I was in a situation at that time where they were trying to teach those to people. But I couldn't believe it. I just, I could not believe it, that that was happening.
My question though too is always what happened to that individual?
Right.
What happened along the way?
Yep, some of them had, um, traumatic situations in their life. But some of them were, grew up in a family that their family was still operating in the same thing.
That's that generational poverty.
Yeah, and it was sad, it, it was really sad.
And, um, I'm, I'm not gonna go down that path.
Jackie-
I also, also just had a conversation with, um, a, a colleague that had a college student, very fluent family. Exact same thing you're saying, same thing. She worked with this, this student very diligently, who was very bright, very good at what they were doing, but didn't have those basic skills.
Yeah.
And she, so that, it goes across the board too. But in the si- both infants, instances, I would ask what happened to those individuals, if that did not happen, that did not take place.
What? Do, do the schools help with all, any of that at all to bring those kids out of the mode that you're talking about? Does the schools work on that at all to bring these kids up, up out of that?
Not that I am aware of.
Or would be the place those children could go?
So, I, I've asked myself that, these very same questions, and whose responsibility is it? And, um, I think grassroots-type programming. So, I felt like I had a responsibility, I've had this conversation with a few friends in the community. We started a nonprofit, Empowering Families. I don't know if you're familiar with it. And so that's my side hustle, doesn't pay, but it's side hustle. And so we created that organization, it's a nonprofit, to, you know, with financial literacy. It's something that's important that people need to know. Um, we help businesses, anyone interested in starting a business. Um, we bring in the, the people and often offer them for free. And you would be amazed at the number of people that have come in, first-generation college students that need help with scholarships to get to college. We had multiple kids come in on Saturdays, and their mothers came with them. So we, I thought, we need to develop some programming for mothers. Out of that came some of these other financial literacy and, um, this, um, forming businesses. But, um, yeah, I think that communities need to, need to-
If you just look at our problems, I mean, we have small amount of problems here compared to like inner cities, big cities like that. You can't even imagine, uh, the amount of children that get neglected or not, brought through those things too, so they could apply for work or or maintain a job.
I, I think our community has allowed this to happen. And I don't care whether it's nineteen fifty or twenty twenty-four. It's still there. You still need to know how to balance a checkbook. You still need to know how to change a tire, or start a lawnmower, or basic skills that we no longer do anymore in the schools.
Schools need to go back to that, that's the only place you get them in a group session.
But the problem, uh, Russ, is that we've allowed it to happen.
Yeah.
We have allowed it to happen. And, and when kids get out of, when kids graduate from high school, ask them sometime, can you balance a checkbook? Can you, can you change the tire on that car for me? No. No, we can't.
Yeah.
But we can run a computer. We can run a computer and, and we can, and we can do all of those things that are okay. I'm not saying don't do those, but we have walked away from the basic life skills.
True.
Basic life skills. And, 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 and again, we've allowed it to happen. We, we as a community have allowed that to happen. We, we've, we've allowed our, our school system, who takes a lot of our money, to move away from the basic things. Learn how to read, write, do math, all of those, all of those things that are necessary to succeed in life. We're not, we're not thinking about that.
And as things become more technologically advanced, that's where-
It has, it has to be, and I'm not, I'm not saying that. But the rest of the stuff is still there.
I think your, your colleagues do, that, that's a question they're asking too, and who, who, it's not falling upon the schools anymore, so whose responsibility is it? it's not falling upon the schools anymore, so whose responsibility is it?
You know, the bottom line is.
Good question for everyone.
It's each of us responsibility. We all need to take those opportunities to help someone we have the opportunity to do so. Something I noticed when I was a postmaster years ago, kids coming into my office, didn't know how to count change. So, we had class, everything they come in, we kind of changed, I explained how, why, how we were doing it, why we were doing it. And so, I was really surprised, because when I was a little kid at school, we learned how to count change. But that's not happening. And so, these basic life skills are like Ken said, they're, they're out there somewhere, but they're not being taught.
And I, and, and I don't mean to shorten you up here, Jackie.
I'm almost finished.
Go ahead. I, I, I'm, I'm just saying that we have some other stuff to cover, but I appreciate the information that you're bringing. Go for it.
Last slide, what's resilience?
I've seen a lot of resilience.
You hit the bottom so hard you bounce.
Sometimes, sometimes.
Stick to it enough, that's resilience.
Okay. So, here's my definition. So, that might have been your case, right? You hit so hard, you bounced, and you found out what you were made of. Some people have that, a lot of people have that, they can do it. Um, not everybody can. Resilience is a process and outcome of successfully adapting to difficult or challenging life experiences, especially through mental, emotional behavior flexibility and adjustments to eternal and internal demands. Psychological research demonstrates that the resource, resources and skills associated with resilience can be cultivated and practiced. So, what are the implications? What is the message, since my primary audience is educators? And I think you, you all touched on it. And this is what I said to them, the implications is that, um, people, educators that work with young children. The research tells us, it only takes one person, one person to show a child that, um, there's something different, there's a different way. So, all, that's all it takes. So, I was, eh, participate, I'll just tell you a quick story, participating in a training, um, about, and they, the professor, or the, the, the person who developed the training was also a professor, um, talked about resilience at length and, and so, I'm really curious about resilience. And so, this is what he tells me, the research tells us, it only takes one person. And I said, now, my mom was generational, um, poverty. And remember, I said, she changed it for me, she changed it for us. We're all productive citizens. And some of us are college educated, but we all take care of ourselves and our families. And he said, it was probably one person that made an impact in her life. And she may not remember it, um, so remember that, you're the educator in the room, I want you to remember that. Um, and then I said, I think I know what happened. My mother grew up during the depression, a single mom, which was pretty much unheard of. She went to live with her aunt and uncle. Her aunt and uncle, uh, had a family. They worked together, they prayed together, they did chores together, they went to church together, they ate together. They showed her what a family was like. And so, thus then, when she raised us, she had that model in her mind that changed our trajectory. So, that's the message I want to leave you with, is you can change the trajectory of a child and that's the story I tell all the educators that I work with in professional development. It just takes one individual. Finished.
I, I, I think that's great, and that, that's a completely different message than we got a couple of weeks ago.
But I wasn't here, and I was here today.
And, and I.
We appreciate you.
I had a nice visit with Rob last week, whenever that was. Uh, and indicated to him that we, we were reacting even on your first one. And I tried to look that up to watch to see what was all said, I couldn't get it up, couldn't get it to come up. But, uh, we were reacting on information, the little piece of information that, that we got. Uh, on, and both your presentation and the young lady who's talking on, on, on the poverty thing. And I, I appreciate you taking your time to explain what it is that, that, that we do. One of the things that Rob told me in my office, when we were talking about the CRT issue, and I think that's, that was one of the concerns when you were visiting with us.
Another day, it was telling you.
Yeah. But he assured me that that's not being taught, that there is nothing in the CRT program that is included with that. That would have been good information to have that night, but I think it got lost in the, maybe in the emotions, possibly. Uh, and there was another gentleman that was kind of feeding, feeding to it also.
Right.
Uh, so, and so, anyway, I, I, I hope we're all on the same page now. That we all know that there's issues and the issues need to be addressed. Uh, we have the same issues, we, we have the same, I think we're, I think we're all on the same page.
You do too, I just had to come. And, and that's where, that's why I came.
I understand that, and thank you, thank you for coming, very much.
Thanks for listening.
Rob, do you have anything to add?
You know, I don't have a lot to add, I think one of the big things that, uh, the reason I visited with Ken was, University of Nebraska Extension, we're here to help you. We engage all Nebraskans, no matter what their status, political beliefs, backgrounds, whatever. We are there to serve Nebraskans, and that's what we do. And we, we bring research evidence-based information, uh, to the local people. We try to be relevant and responsive, because that's what these people do, just like Jackie talked about. She did her research, she did her assessments to make sure these are programs that people are asking for. And that's what we do in Extension, we're not out there mandating things or anything like that. We're there to help move Nebraskans forward. We keep using, we're here to co-create a better tomorrow for all Nebraskans. And that's really where our goal is. And so, as we think about that, that's probably the biggest thing is, is why I'm here supporting Jackie tonight, is in the conversation I had with Ken is, it's about what people are asking for, and that's what we try to do. No matter if it's adult programming, which most of our programming outside the four H and STEM programs, most of the programs our executors offer are to adults. And, and those programs are helping them move what they're doing forward. And so, that's kind of why I'm here, is in that support. So, I appreciate your support and your time. Uh, definitely a difference, uh, in the conversation from two weeks ago to now, so.
Rob, what, one of the things you said in my office was that you identify the problem, you're made aware of the problem, and you do what you can to try to resolve the problem, and I think that's important.
Yes, and, and that, that's, that's what peace extension does.
Right.
And so, uh, that's what we're here for, and we're in all ninety-three counties, uh, no matter where we are, uh, and we serve all Nebraskans, so.
Okay, thank you for taking your time.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jackie.
Okay, let's, uh, keep moving, discuss and consider replacement of the WatchGuard server video storage, in-car and body-worn camera system. Troy and Lisa are doing that, I think. What do you need?
Okay, I'm Troy Brown, Chief Deputy here to Sheriff's Office, gentlemen. Um, our current, uh, in-car body camera system that we use is WatchGuard. Uh, we had it installed back in two thousand fifteen when Chance Porkey was, is still here working. Um, and it has expired, its life has kind of ended, kind of suddenly for us. We figured we could get another year out of it if possible. Unfortunately, right now, techs with WatchGuard have to go in about every couple of days and push video that's coming off the cars that are being stored in the system, making sure they get through there. And they tell us every time, next time they get in there, this thing may crash and you're gonna lose all your video. I've had Lieutenant Huffman downloading video onto terabyte hard drives that are critical videos for evidence, traffic stops, that's it, just so we have them in case it does crash, but it's, it's inevitable. So, I'm here to talk about upgrading the system because it is an expensive system. And we have, what we've, we did a publication, uh, we've called to other companies that have a similar product, like Axon and Wolfcom, to get their bids to see how much it's actually gonna cost. Uh, right now, WatchGuard has been bought out by Motorola a couple of years ago. Some of that product has changed. Um, our current system, the video downloads from the car, we have a wireless access point that goes to the server, downloads to the server, and then Lieutenant Huffman has to go through, find the videos for any court evidence that, uh, Mr. Eubanks might need, and he has to hand push it to their server. Same thing with Dis- Discovery, the defense attorneys, we have to do the same thing, uh, to get them the video when they need it. The new system, we're gonna get rid of onsite storage and go to a cloud storage-based system, which all that does, then that allows him just to give them a link to that. And just to give you an idea how cumbersome this old system is, I did an audit on, uh, Lieutenant Huffman's overtime last year, and actually I had to pay him out like twelve thousand dollars in overtime, just moving videos after hours on the weekends when, just because it is such a, a cumbersome, cumbersome system. The new system, however, all you have to do is email a link to the cloud and they can access it that way, so should take that away.
So, you're gonna eliminate the server altogether?
Uh, there'll be a, there'll be a smaller server, but that'll act as a central storage point as the, uh, video gets sent to the cloud.
For a transfer of the storage.
Right, and it goes to the cloud. And then that allow, that allows somebody else besides Bytes and their techs from maintaining the server. Somebody else maintains those servers somewhere in the cloud, um, through Motorola. Um, the two, we didn't get any response on our publication when we published it. Um, but Axon was the only other, other than Motorola, was the only other company that responded to our request. And one of the requests was, um, right now, if we buy a, a video camera system, which comes with a in-car camera and a body camera, um, you get that system, which is about eleven thousand dollars.
For what?
For one system.
And how many units were you looking at?
Uh, this'll give us thirteen units. We'll replace all the units in our cars, just because those units, the new software and a new server, they don't, they don't communicate, because they're so old. Um, so, we're looking at replacing that. And when we order a new unit, we get a one-year warranty. With this, a program that we're looking at now, we're gonna get a five-year warranty.
Now, is there any other costs with that, or what's your monthly charge on the cloud?
Um, it'll, we could, we have an option to pay annually, or you can pay all upfront, with a five-year plan.
What's your month, a year, yearly charge?
Um, with, uh, WatchGuard, it's about forty-three thousand a year for the whole thing.
The cloud doesn't sound cheap.
That's, that's paying for the product and the cloud storage, that's paying for the whole, the whole package. The whole package with WatchGuard total is about two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Um, the whole package with, uh, Axon, which was the other company that has the same, similar product, um, it was about two, three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars.
But you're seeing forty-three thousand a year just for accessing that cloud?
Uh, paying for the lease of the equipment, which is the body camera, in-car camera, the five-year warranty, which gives you, uh, immediate replacement of camera breaks.
You're leasing them instead of purchasing them?
Uh, that, that's what we're looking at doing, instead of purchasing.
Forty-three thousand a year then?
Yes, sir.
And what is our, you're spending twelve thousand right now on overtime?
On, on his overtime.
Not counting the regular, not counting the regular time.
Right, and if we were to buy each individual, we buy eleven thousand dollars. Well, actually, it's a little bit more because the product's, uh.
Uh, just a minute, you said you're leasing it. Are you buying or leasing?
Well, we're looking to, we're looking to, to a five-year lease.
Okay.
Right, right now, it's a, right now, we're not in a lease, we're, we purchased the camera.
Correct.
We get one-year warranty, and then we install it and we run it till it expires, it runs, till it just breaks and doesn't work anymore.
So, it's forty-three thousand a year lease?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so then, what goes away after the personal five years?
At the five years, we, uh, the warranty on the equipment, we can re-up that warranty at a, at a higher cost, or we can buy into a new program and get all brand-new equipment again and continue that five years.
So, what is your cloud access gonna cost from that day on?
Uh, one second here, I'll look at the. So, the cloud, uh, cloud will run about sixteen thousand five hundred a year.
After that.
After that, yes, sir. And that's unlimited data, um, so you can store as much video to include, if we have a crime scene, somebody else sends a video in, we can attach that video to the cloud storage as well.
Right.
Um, like I said, Motorola came in, uh, they had the best bid, and what we get, uh, year one, we'll get thirteen brand-new body, uh, in-car systems and twenty brand-new body cameras. I do, my investigators and my SWAT guys use body cameras, so that's why the extra one. At year two and a half, we get, uh, twenty brand-new, uh, body cameras to replace the old ones. And they say that's because sometimes you get to a point where the bot, the battery life isn't a full shift, and so, they just replace the old camera at that.
So, are you looking at doing this in July when the budget's coming in, or when you?
We're looking to try to get to this right away, since our server's about ready to crash.
Why do we do that?
Uh, so, I've had a couple of meetings with, uh, Lisa. Initially, I thought about applying for the ARPA funding, uh, since there's some still left over. Um, and after some discussion, we decided to leave that ARPA funding for the, for Steve if he need, to use as, as needed. Um, right now, there's a hundred thousand dollar, uh, fund from, it's referred to as a tribal fund, but it's now the TCF money that comes from the federal monument. There's about a hundred thousand sitting on it, and it's, that's earmarked specifically for public safety.
And is there, uh, is there any other grants or anything that could be applied for?
Not at this time, no. We were hoping to find some, but there's nothing available for this project right now.
Well, we're stretching it out over five years, is there any way we could bring a grant in later, have later data?
If one come open, we could apply for one, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Uh, the other option that we talked about was, was to take care of the rest of this off capital gains, but that's why we're here to discuss this.
Take off capital gains?
Capital improvement.
Uh, capital improvement, sorry, sorry.
I didn't say we don't pay capital gains.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes, different means, different.
Right, capital improvements was the other option, finishing out after the hundred thousand to pay this off.
Do you have anything left in your budget which you want?
No, sir.
Nope.
In fact, we're, we, our budget's gone for the most part. I'm, I'm, I'm running, I'm running on fumes, I really am. And, and that's just from what last fall happened with Brad Garcia and that.
What do we do to tighten our belts so we don't run on fumes?
That's been doing, I, believe me, when I started the year, I think I was a hundred and sixty-eight thousand over budget, and I've got it down to forty-eight thousand, and I'm still making.
You're doing good.
I'm still making more, more, you know, I'm gonna tell you guys, my deputies, my deputies are, they're rock, they're rock stars. They have bought into helping out with the department and, and keeping it running and keeping everything to a minimum and.
And he's down one officer right now to help with the budget crunch, right?
Yeah, I do have one, one deputy that took the Mitchell Police Chief job, and so, I chose not to replace him. I mean, my dad been sergeant working the road and taking calls and doing what needs to be done.
That's how you fix a back end, back end of a budget.
That's exactly right, gotta do what we can.
Good job.
Right, so.
So, Troy, let me be sure that I understand that. Did you say simply it's forty-three thousand a year, or is there an initial cost plus forty-three?
So, with, with Motorola, uh, which is the one I recommend, um, just because I think we get a better bang for the buck with the, the pricing. Um, their initial upgrade with the installing of the equipment, getting it here, is about, is, uh, sixty-four thousand for the first year. And then after that, it's the forty-three, forty-three, six, thirty-nine change.
And, and that's a lease program, not a purchase?
Right, that's a lease.
But it's a five-year leas- lease purchase.
Right, but we get it for five years.
Buy it out of five.
Yeah, good, right.
Then you said it goes to nineteen thousand a year.
Uh, if we just stay with the storage, it's about a little over sixteen thousand for unlimited storage annually, right?
That pays for all your cloud access.
All the cloud storage, yes.
So, if it's a lease, if something goes wrong, then they replace it?
Right.
So, by the time that the five years is up, we've got relatively.
Pretty new.
New equipment that we can option, either buy or continue lease, correct?
Continue on, right, yeah. And a year and two and a half, they automatically send twenty brand-new body cameras.
Okay.
When did you purchase the current system?
Two thousand fifteen, so it's nine years old. Um, and the software is, is warped, uh, warped past what we, what we're running right now.
Can, uh, Motorola do what they did with us when we bought the radios? Can you give us like a six-month variance on, on the first payment?
No, sir. They, what we've gotten them to is this number, we've cut, cut it down as much as we can and.
Yeah, but they're not gonna have them all installed, can we make the first payment app on the, the date everything is installed?
Uh, if, when I tell them that this is approved, they said they'll have the equipment here in about four weeks.
That's right, and then we can, then we can pay for it when it gets here, and once it's installed, who is installed?
Uh, Nathan Flower, Nathan Flowers and I think one of his sons. Uh, Nathan, he's caring fire chief over here. He's, him and his son have a side business on.
So, they're not, it doesn't, no Motorola doesn't install it then?
No, sir, they.
Who maintains it then?
Uh, we'll maintain it ourselves.
So.
If it breaks, then we just ship it to them and they, they replace and replace it.
Is the stuff removable that you can just take out the cameras and do that?
Yes, sir, the, the whole system is, what's the word I want, compartmentalized, so you have, you have a camera, you have a hard drive, you have a, uh, we call it the, a microtic, which is basically an antenna that sends the message to the access point here in the county. Um, and then that, that's pretty much the system, and each part of it can, is easily removed and, and shipped off and replaced.
So, the other unit is not, relatively just nine years old, and it's, there's no changing or upgrading any of that stuff?
As it is, no, not right now, uh, well, not even right. I think it, it's been in the life for a while. In fact, the last two units that we purchased, we purchased from another agency that had changed, they went to another, uh, program, and they had two, uh, camera systems that were just sitting around. And we had two that were lo- uh, just damaging car wrecks, and so, we had to replace them. So, they got, they cut us a deal on buying those old units, but they are still in the life.
And the system will be helpful too with the power surges we've had and when out, we're cloud-based, I mean, it's...
Right, we're cloud-based now, so we don't worry about when the power goes out and the servers start...
You're on a different generator system out there, aren't you, or is it all feed into here?
It's downstairs.
It's in, in here downstairs.
Oh, that's...
Yes, sir.
So, okay, I need to ask again.
Yes, sir.
So it's sixty-four thousand when you get the equipment?
Yes, sir.
And then it's forty-three thousand dollars a year for five years?
Four years.
Four or five?
Four years after year, so year one is sixty-four thousand and then four years after that is forty-three.
Right, and in that sixty-four is the forty-three, so to speak.
Right.
All right, so it's, um, that one sixty plus sixty, two hundred and twenty-five thousand or so is what we're talking about for this five-year amount?
The price I got quoted was two thirty-nine, uh, one fifty-six.
Which covers five years.
Covers all five years, yes, sir.
Is there a better, better deal if we pay it off all at once?
Uh, that is if you pay it off all at once. There's not much difference between paying it out over five years or if you pay it off all at once.
So at the end of five years, do we own that stuff?
Yes, sir. We own all the equipment.
Then we own.
So then they don't give us free replacements?
No, then...
Now, the stuff you got, you say you just bought some of the same stuff you own right now. Are we able to sell it? And there's some departments that could still use those pieces and you could maybe get a little bit of something out of it?
Right, but... They're, they're... They're into life and find a department like us that's still running that old software, I don't know who they would be. Most agencies are moving on to the... From Evidence Library, which is what we run, to a program they call Command, Command Central. That's the new software for Motorola.
You know, they have a program, Public Surplus, and there's, I see a lot of your radios, your computers and stuff the police departments turn in. And that stuff brings some really big money out. I'm surprised, you know, you just put it on there and it, it sells.
We definitely can.
We get an exposure, exposing all your government agencies, you know, and really...
Right.
Put you out there, you know, and maybe there are people that can't afford to do stuff that, you know, they'd like to have one or two cameras, just like you did a while back.
Right.
Wouldn't hurt to put it out there.
Oh, no, it doesn't hurt at all, right.
It might help someone else.
Yeah.
So, last year, did we pay money on those cameras that we have now?
Uh, the two, the two that we replaced were bought with insurance company because they were in patrol cars that were...
But we don't have any annualized fee on the ones that we're using right now?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
Okay.
What do you wanna do? Discuss a little more, right? Just like, we're gonna increase our yearly cost by sixteen thousand a year. We're paying twelve in overtime. So that was for a year.
Right.
We don't know that that's every year. That's probably not every year.
We've got Bytes maintaining the current system.
Just the server.
So, I mean, that, there's probably a minimal savings there, maybe a thousand bucks at the most, but...
A year or a month?
A year. So, so it's, by the time you're not paying the overtime and by the time the Bytes takes it off the invoice...
Washing out pretty good.
Washing out, you know, spend about three grand a month more, or three grand, per year more.
Right.
Others, you have?
I was just gonna say, you know, Troy had mentioned that we were willing to use the L A T C F funds to pay for a hundred thousand dollars of this project. Um, L A T C F money is a little bit different than the ARPA money. It was a one-time, you know, one-time thing from the federal government. We got it because we have federal lands. It's supposed to be used for public safety and so that will pay for a large chunk of this program.
Really?
And that's what we would like to use it for. All we have for the L A T C F money is the one hundred thousand dollars and we won't get any more of that, but it is like ARPA. It does have to be pledged and used by the end of twenty twenty-five and six and so...
Well, that makes a big difference. That'll cut that lease down. If you apply that to the front end, we can lease for half of that.
Right.
So then, you know, if you guys would want to use any of the rest of the money out of Capital Improvements Fund, you know, that would take it down and it would be paid for, for five years if we paid for it upfront.
And then what would happen?
I think we gotta take the money that you have, that has to be spent immediately and apply that and then take...
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that, but you know, if you wanna pay for it upfront, there's, Lisa and I've talked about it with Troy and, um, kind of with our ARPA meeting. We talked about using possibly the rest of the money to come out of Capital Improvements Fund, you know, so that we can get this up and get, get it up and running for five years.
Well, they'll get it up and running, I guess, soon as you make the down payment, they'll order the stuff to, it'll, it'll be the same. We spread that out.
If you have a hundred thousand dollars, that's gonna get you the first two years, basically.
Yeah, we'll be caught up.
And, um, so...
I'd be good with that.
That would, um, yeah, are real close to it anyway.
Yeah.
And, um, then after that, then you would have your forty-three thousand to pay for three more years.
Right.
Did I miss something originally? What does the overtime have to do with this?
That's the time that Lieutenant Hupman spends moving video from our server to the county attorney.
Okay, all right, I, I, I didn't realize that he was on overtime.
It's a smooth way of justifying his costs.
I didn't realize that he was on overtime doing that.
And that's one of the, yeah, that's one of the things I get after him all the time, but during his, his business days, he's busy doing investigative stuff and managing investigations and so he has to tip.
So this overtime is his work, okay, I got you now.
Yeah, he stays late, comes in on Saturdays.
I missed that, I'm sorry.
So we would, we would see that go down.
Fact remains, we gotta move to that.
Go away, should be gone.
Right.
With the new, with the new software, yeah.
We gotta move that direction sometime.
What's your pleasure, folks?
Well, if they're willing to put down a hundred thousand on it and, uh, pay it off the other three years, I'd make a motion we'd go that way.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Record your votes. Thank you, guys. Lisa, Troy?
Thank you.
Rose? We do need to check your batteries, huh?
I'm having trouble with mine too. I've got to push it three or four times.
Remember that, Kelly?
Okay, next item aside, discuss, reconsider personnel policy, uh, three-one-three-zero on recruitment, Lisa.
Do you wanna take a quick break or go for recruitment?
Anybody need a break? Do you wanna do five minutes here real quickly?
Let's do.
All right, we'll do a five-minute break and then come back.
And I can get my stuff set up.
No, wait, it's...
We couldn't do personnel policy on that one.
You wanna, like, table it, but you know what you're gonna...
There isn't any more.
Yes, yes. Probably if I know what I'm gonna do this, I'll...
Okay, we're ready to go again, please. Do you have the floor, Lisa?
You ready? Okay, first I wanna share a quick story with you here. I put my Personnel Board, uh, report that I sent, give to my Personnel Board in there. And I told you with the Claire email that this had been on our agenda for, to trying to get that marketed to employees for the last year, it had been there. I called my new Time Clock Plus Care, it's that Customer Care Manager today. They had called out and said, we, we wanna see if there's any new things you'd like to talk to us about. Of course, we do. We have a lot of stuff going on right now. And I asked her about Claire. She said, Time Clock Plus disassociated with Claire some time ago. That should even be on your screens. Okay.
Voila.
Yeah, but I said, we're still seeing it. Well, we'll be, I'll be asking about that. So just wanted to tell you, moot point at this point, okay?
Okay.
All right, so, anyway, hopefully we can roll through these fairly quickly.
If you just, maybe just discuss the changes would be enough, yeah.
Mm-hmm, okay. So do you have, we're just going one by one. Recruitment, we wanted to add a section in there. If you, if somebody writes you down as a reference to their job, that's on our application, like, I'm sorry, I'm gonna use Orlando. If Orlando would have written down Charlie Knapper, um, referred me to this job or told me of the county job, the person takes the job, passes their first six months um, review with no issues, the employee can get a eight hours, or get a day of vacation for a good referral. So, we wanted to clarify that. Um, if a new employee is hired as a result of a referral from a county employee, this must be stated on the county application. The current employee will receive one day of leave and then we're gonna put together a referral bank within Time Clock Plus and that employee has a certain amount of time to use it. So, but we're gonna put a day of leave and a referral bank after the new employee has made it beyond the county's six-month probationary period and earned a satisfactory evaluation. So, anyway, we're gonna give them, anyway, that they, they're, they get this day of leave and they need to use it, day of leave and a ref... We wanted to say that they had to use it in a, within a year, but that was next. The additional name, it must be used in six months, so we aren't limiting the person or when they need to use it.
And upon approval from department head?
I'm gonna say it's in the bank and you have to approve the day that they would take. So it'd be like a floating holiday, but they're in this other bank. So, that's what we're asking for, day of leave, put in a bank. Anyway, there's just...
Okay.
We just clarified the policy.
And it has to be stated on the application when they apply. So the, no surprises after the fact, um...
Exactly. We can't, they can't say, didn't they put my name on it? They didn't put it on, sorry.
And it said...
And it, and we can't, we rely on the employee who's supposed to have had the referral to come back to us. We don't go hunt this down. You know what I'm saying?
We rely on the person applying to write the name down.
We rely on the person that says, didn't so-and-so put me on their application and they can ask and then we put the referral bank out there. But we're not going to add it until this person's passed probation. So, give me a referral for someone and they leave in a month, then I don't owe you a day of vacation.
Okay, what's your pleasure? We'll, we'll do them one at a time, if that's all right.
I'd move to approve this one.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any other discussion?
Just a quick question. Do we allow employees to, um, transfer time off?
Between?
Like if I have a hundred twenty-eight hours of PTO, can I give eight hours to Joe who might not have any hours, but he's sick and, no, okay, just a quick?
No.
I think it was discussed at one time to, to put a bank together, but it just hasn't really happened.
I'd say, it would be more of a process and then so I give a day of vacation to some, to one of the bus drivers. It's not apples to apples.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, pay two different rates and...
That's right. Okay, any other discussion? Record your votes, please.
See, I have that one over there.
And I, I should mention while we're doing these that I was not able to be at the Personnel Board Meeting. Mike, our alternate, was filling in and so if there's any comments from that part of it, Mike would be the one that...
Okay, next one.
Benefits while on leave. This has, this is in the FMLA section of our handbook and we wanted to clarify, make some clarif, clarifying policy regarding holidays while you're out on FMLA. If a person's taking up a, a month for a knee replacement or something, it's pretty cut and dry, pretty easy. But when we have these intermittent FMLA, somebody has constant back pain, they can't work, so they take a day. They have the doctor paperwork turned in, they take a day here or on another day here. We see it more frequently with migraines. We just wanna try to clarify holiday pay and how that would fit into this. Holiday, so when, when a holiday falls during a week in which an employee is taking the full week of FMLA leave, the entire week is counted as FMLA leave, because they have a certain number of hours of FMLA. Okay, number two, however, when a holiday falls during a week when an employee's taking less than the full week of FMLA leave, the holiday is not counted as FMLA leave unless the employee was scheduled and expected to work on the holiday and use FMLA leave for that day. Three, um, this had to do, I threw, I left this in there and it, and it passed, more to do with like Extension Service who banks holidays and uses them all during, during that break between Christmas and New Year's. Department shutdowns for more, one or more weeks where employees are not expected to report to work, such as for Christmas, New Year, holiday, do not count against an employee's FMLA leave, FMLA leave entitlement. Yeah, like I said, there's only one department where that would, where we actually shut down.
Where's that?
The Extension Service. Because the university closes between Christmas and New Year's. So, so they will work on Columbus Day or they will work on Juneteenth and save those holidays during that time rather than taking vacation time. Anyway, and this just pertains to FMLA, is why we're even talking about it.
What's your pleasure, folks?
I move that we approve it.
I'll second. Is there any other discussion? Record your votes, please. Okay, next one, injured...
Okay, this is for a person on workers' comp. Um, current policy now is if, okay, a person's out on injury leave, work comp pays them sixty-six and two-thirds of their pay. Work comp pays that, our carrier pays that, but the employee can supplement that with their own sick leave that they have banked to help pay for, mainly for their, their, for their, excuse me, that's the word I'm looking for, medical...
Insurance, yeah.
Medical needs and their insurance and stuff that's taken out of every paycheck. So, they can make themselves whole with their sick leave. I had presented it earlier with, we don't have to do this at all, but it was felt it's still a valuable benefit because if they only get sixty-six and two-thirds of their paycheck, then they have to pay the clerk's office for those pre-tax amounts that they've, they, for their fifty dollars a month for the health insurance and stuff. So this at least helps them pay for this.
Is it taxable, the, the, the work comp money?
Well, they tell me it is not, but...
I didn't think so, okay.
And I did a, I provided a survey of several counties, several cities and most everybody is still doing, allowing employees to use a portion of their PTO.
So even at sixty-six and two-thirds without taking any taxes out, they're close to what I made is what I'm taking home?
Close to, I'd say, like for myself, my benefits are, my, what I ha, what's taken out for me is twenty-four percent of my paycheck. So sixty-six and two-thirds would still be less than I currently earn.
But, but at least close somewhere in there.
That is close.
Yeah, thank you, okay.
Anyway, and I'm, I don't know that, I think the wave is to maybe take some of that away or at least allow them to use just what they need, but at this point, Personnel Committee was still interested in allowing the person to use, to be entitled to use their sick leave.
And that's, um, I'm assuming that means up to, uh, no more than what they would have normally earned.
Yes, right.
Right? I mean, they can't earn...
More.
More because they use sick leaves.
Correct.
Does that say that here?
Why are you looking? Trying to read the...
So that you can...
Does it say it specifically? Necessarily. Workers, workers' comp pays two-thirds of an employee's regular pay. The employee elects to use sick leave or vacation leave to make up the balance of his or her salary. In this case, one-third of sick leave or vacation will be charged per day and the sick or vacation leave will be earned at the normal rate after all such...
You said, make up the balance. That might cover it.
Yeah.
Sure.
That language.
So they, in theory, aren't supposed to make more than if they were working. So C, we added, if an employee is absent from work due to a workplace injury and out of vacation, sick and compensatory time, employee will be responsible for payment of elected employee payroll deductions. For example, the health, dental, vision, life insurance, and this payment is due by the fifteenth of the month. See Policy seventy-three oh seven, benefits while on leave. So, if they can't use, they have no sick leave, they have no vacation to apply and they're out on an injury, they still need to pay their payroll deductions to, to us. They have to pay their fifty dollars a month for insurance or a hundred dollars plus...
And that's just county expenses, that's not state or federal?
Correct, yeah, we're talking just things they've elected.
Okay, gotcha. Right.
Is it to us or to the vendor?
To us and then we pay the vendor a belief. Whatever works best for the clerk's office... Whatever works best for the clerk's office, but I'm thinking it's always been we pay, they pay the county. And then we pay our premiums to the vendors, because they aren't taken off our policies.
Okay.
Okay, so that that's the first change, then among other benefits available under workers compensation are rehabilitation, total and partial disability allowances. And death benefits, that's not a change, that I'm just reading through because it's in between. Number five, Scotts Bluff County will return the employee to work with light duty options based on physician recommendations if possible. Light duty may be offered within any department of Scotts Bluff County. And last one, employees with further questions may contact the contact Nirma, and here's the phone number. And then we also made a note, most of it's there, but we um enhanced it. While on injury leave, the employee or employee representative will report his or her progress and intended date of return to work. On a weekly basis to his or her elected or appointed official or supervisor. We just want our people to be in contact with their employees who are out and not just let them be. Um, not be not hearing from anybody if they can, so whether it be from my office or from the officials. We need to continue to contact and tell the person, we want you to back, we want you back. That's it.
Okay. What's your pleasure?
What do, how did that go in the meeting, everybody?
Yeah, yeah, it was.
They liked it.
Okay, do I have a motion, do I have a motion for approval in, please?
I'll move to approve this one.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion? Record your votes.
Russ.
Didn't go again?
Watch the board.
And the last one, this one's fairly easy. Equal opportu- employment opportunity. Uh, we put this in front of you with a update here a time or two ago and it was not passed by the Board of Commissioners. But we do have a new policy regarding ADA restrictions and how we're going to accommodate our employees who need accommodations. And there was a statement here, and this was brought forward by our personnel, our employee representative to the Personnel Board to. Knock my name out of there, ADA complaint should be addressed to, because he's he has been adamant. The directors or the officials elected appointed need to be very directly involved as as well as HR, because that's what the other policy says. In how we can accommodate our people, so. Anyway, it's like we said, it's this is just kind of a reiteration, it's all addressed in policy seventeen hundred.
Seventeen hundred.
Yeah, I'm throwing a number out there just because, I'm sorry, I was. I can look it up if we need to, I did not give you a copy of seventeen hundred, but it's something we've passed before. Would that be helpful?
Um, I'm just trying to find it in my manual and.
Oh, you have the manual sitting there, okay.
Right, and I don't have an eleven.
You can go to our website and search that number when you're on the Personnel Manual and pull stuff up pretty quickly for you too.
And, you know, it's been a while since I've printed one, but it jumps from. Ninety five hundred to twelve thousand. So. Thought this said.
Did you say one seven zero zero?
I said it to put out, I said something I didn't.
Let me go back to eleven.
There's more to refer to the fact that there is another policy, whether I grabbed.
Did you just pass it?
No, this is.
Yeah, it's eleven hundred, sorry, I thought it was eleven thousand.
Oh, eleven hundred is like one of the first ones, and then the ADA.
It's eleven hundred.
Oh goodness, this is about a year ago.
And and this primarily.
Reasonable accommodation, thirteen fifty, so. And that's where counties committed to participating in an interactive accommodation process with the employee. And if an individual who requests a reasonable accommodation will normally be required to meet with the. HR department to discuss the need for accommodation and to complete a written request for accommodation, so it's all there as the intention.
But it's not on the agenda?
Wasn't it?
This number?
We're talking about eleven hundred.
Right, it's on the agenda.
She said that you approved something else a few months back, right?
Yeah, which is why we're taking it that my name off of eleven hundred, because we do have a thirteen fifty that goes into more depth on that on ADA.
Gotcha.
And how we will accommodate. An employee who would need an accommodation, that makes sense?
I'm with you now.
And this simply keeps the language that we had before.
Mm-hmm.
Takes your information off.
Just takes my name out of there.
Yeah, okay.
I'll move to approve this change.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Vote?
Hang on, something's wrong. Mike Blue and Ken Meyer. Oh, that went through.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Want to go to the next one?
Am I, is it mine?
No, it's mine, oh, so they're required, both cities, they're required to give you an update and so I would just like to see if you guys could receive these in direct. For their tip projects.
Okay, I entertain a motion to receive the increment financing redevelopment proj- projects and also we'll do them one at a time.
Were we done here?
On all of the personnel stuff, yeah.
Alright.
Okay.
So that part about overtime, that just happened to be on that page or something?
That was one that we they didn't get approved.
Okay.
Okay. Again, I would entertain a motion for the to receive the tax increment financing redevelopment progress report from City of Scotts Bluff.
I've moved that we accept the uh redevelopment project progress report from City of Scotts Bluff.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Record your votes. Okay, the next one, I would entertain a motion to receive the tax increment financing redevelopment process for the City of Gearing.
I move we we accept it for the City of Gearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Just uh going back um to when we we learned about some of these projects had been paid off. And we were not being remitted our our taxes correctly. Have we, have we kept up on that, or?
Um, they're supposed to notify the assessor's office.
Okay.
Um, if we overpay on a tip, then they have to actually pay us back and we redistribute it to. With the City of Gearing or the City of Scotts Bluff, so if the money goes through, it should have gone.
Okay, so I, was it about a year ago when that happened, when we when um?
I would say two years.
It's it's probably been, it's been a while, the City of Gearing um had quite a few that had been paid off that they had not let anybody in the assessor's office know. And so they ended up coming to pay us quite a bit of money.
Okay, any other discussion? Record your votes.
So, I would only ask on that, um. So is it, it's their responsibility to report to us, and us meaning the assessor's office?
Yeah, and what we have started to do, like on our side of it, we've started to actually, like when we get a tip project, we don't pay them here. Because they're only supposed to go for like fifteen years or. We've started to not pay the year so that if in fifteen years nobody's around, they know that it should be ending. But you know, a lot of times what happens is, um, like freshmen, for example, they were sold and refinanced. Um, so they paid it off really really early, um, that's one that ended appropriately.
So I'm pretty sure this was just a year ago when we had this issue.
And they were not one of them. It, yes, there were a whole bunch of them from the City of Gearing. That were audited by the City of Gearing and found out that they should have ended during various years. But did not, and so the city was receiving payment for that and they turned around and paid us back.
So I don't think the board ever got a report on that. I think I remember Lisa telling me about it in her office one day, and I don't think we ever, the board was ever apprised, the whole board was ever apprised of it, so.
Heather and I remember Pat and we, and they, that's what I remember of it, and you had heard of it, and I guess you. And I agree, yes, we heard about it, and they were.
You said you met with Pat, is that what you said?
Pat, yeah. Liz was, oh, yeah. I'm gonna say it was in the fall and she left last fall, so it was probably twenty twenty two.
It's probably been at least a year and a half ago.
I'll wager that it was thirteen months ago.
Okay. Any other discussion? Record your votes, please.
We're we're done.
We already did.
Right.
We did that already, oh, okay.
I started dumping afterwards.
You discussed out of her again.
I know.
Okay, next item, uh. Discuss and consider the ratification of the chairman's signature for the Nebraska co- crime commission and juvenile aid award.
This juvenile aid award, hundred and twenty five thousand three eighty seven, and it usually requires a signature from. The finance contact, Heather is signing on as the finance contact, and we needed the um chairperson to sign off, so. We got Ken's signature the other day on this. And it's it's not a new program, and that's about all I can tell you, it's not a new program and this could helps, this is run under Tammy Frye. Who works for Dave Ubes, it works out of the courthouse and it, she does diversion, but she also does at-risk work with kids or hires someone to do that.
Okay. Entertain a motion for approval, please. I can't make the motion, I signed it.
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
I'll ask a question, if I could.
Absolutely, and now we're in discussion.
Alright, so. Um, is this part of, one of the grants anyway, that there's some uh money borrowed?
No.
Okay.
That's VOKA.
Okay.
The VOKA grant that we won't, no, it's not.
Alright.
And actually, if you remember in December, Tammy and Liz Mc- Liz McDonald were talking to you about applying for this again.
Right.
So this is the grant and they did receive it.
Alright. Well, I haven't pulled out that those loans, is that from the Keno Fund?
Yes.
Primarily? I haven't pulled that out of the consent calendar, but I'm going to one of these days. And so I'll try and let you know so you can have it. Have the have your information, Kelly, to vote separately.
And honestly, um, we have to come through to renew our our loaning here, like.
That's another thing that's coming up in June, right?
Yep, so we can talk to talk to you about that at length.
Okay, if you're gonna have it as a item on the agenda, that's fine with me.
On the agenda? I'm glad you remember, because.
Alright, thanks.
Alright, any other discussion? Record your votes, please.
Russ.
One more time, Russ.
What's that?
One more time.
What's that? Did I not do it yet? Hit it once.
There it goes.
Okay, next item is to discuss and consider the ratification of the chairman's signature on the fuel agreement.
Okay, this, the bids were sent out. On April twelfth and the and the people who want or the places that wanted to bid on a fu- the fuel contract for the new fueling station. That we are really close to deploying, I probably here in the next month. We, that was sent on April twelfth and they had to have their responses back to us by May fifth. And anyway, we went ahead and signed off on the lowest bid, I had talked to Chairman Meyer and Chair, not Chairman, yeah Chairman Meyer and Commissioner Reisig about it. Truthfully, we statute, Nebraska State Statute twenty three dash thirty one oh nine for competitive bidding says. We technically do not have to go out for bid for purchasing petroleum part products, so we felt. We went ahead and accepted because we did not get it on the agenda, but I wanted to put it forth to you now and ratify Ken's signature.
I I went back and rechecked those numbers because Co-op had sent us a. Their bid had said in there that they paid the state tax, so I called Wesco this afternoon and just verified and they said, yeah, they did it, and I said, well, it doesn't show it in your bid. And I said, that's not your fault, I said, we need to put, specify that in our bids from now on that to put the price of the fuel, what the state tax and federal tax, if they're paying any of the. So they mark it that they are, they are, you know. Because it would, it wasn't specific, but because it was about a nine thousand dollar difference. If if Wesco hadn't done it, it would have made Wesco nine thousand higher than what it looks on paper. So I verified that they did include the tax, I got a text, I'm gonna forward that text to you, Lisa. I did get a text from Wesco that says that the tax was paid for the state, so it it makes it the low bid, otherwise it wouldn't have been.
Alright, I thought we had all of them.
So it's correct and it is low.
Wesco was awarded the bid and yeah, we did have one that came through.
See that bottom, go clear to the bottom.
I'll get there, just a second, please, received a bid from Wesco, who's this one? Sat Brothers.
They were way high.
For two ninety four, and then the legacy Co-op.
See where they circled that? They were the only one that called out that they'd included state tax, so I called Wesco and they agreed that they did and I told them to send me a text to that effect, so I'm gonna send that to you, so. It is included.
And we probably need to have a line item on here.
So it does, it does make, it does keep them low, but if you'd have put that twenty four cents back onto that seventy four thousand gallons, it would have made them high. So it's correct, okay?
Is there any other discussion?
Do we have to pay that tax, you're saying?
We we have to somewhere or another, yeah, well, I think we even have to pay federal tax, Steve pays quarterly on federal tax on fuel.
I assume we had to pay federal, I assume we wouldn't have to pay state.
There, we do.
What's that?
They don't pay state tax?
We pay, fill out credits, our federal tax back.
Your federal tax.
We do have to pay state? That's what Steve always told me, we do, we pay both.
You pay a quarterly to a tax.
They're paying for us on this purchase, so it's already included. Just a state, but the state's being paid, we'll pay the quarterly, that was right. Okay, good, I'll send this to you, Lisa.
Any other discussion?
I don't have a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we uh accept the bid from.
We need to.
Wesco.
We need to ratify the signature of the chairman.
Oh, we have a motion?
Well, that's what we're doing, we're, okay ratified.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Record your votes. Okay. Taking care of that, uh, now we'll move to the public comments that we moved from the bottom. Uh, I think we have some folks here that would like to address the board. Uh, when you do that, if you come to the podium, say your name and your address so we can get it on the uh on the recording.
My name's Kim Bowman and I live at seventeen fifty five nineteenth street in Gearing. And I'm gonna read this so I don't get off track. One of the re- one of the reoccurring things we all talk about in this area is how high our taxes are. And what what can be done to reduce them, well, we did have a company attempting to develop something that would generate income, thus providing some income to the county. And thereby helping with our tax issue. But the County, Scotts Bluff County Board of Commissioners have shot down that concept. I'm here this evening to admonish the three Scotts Bluff County Commissioners who voted against granting Citula Energy a conditional use permit. On their last meeting on May sixth, twenty twenty four. This permit denial was a total dereliction of duty to the citizens of Scotts Bluff County. You have more or less told Citula or any other entity thinking about coming to Scotts Bluff County, hey, stay away, we hate anything new and we'll fight hard to keep you out. Not only did the Commissioners deny Citula their request for a conditional use. Not only did the Commissioners deny Citula their request for a conditional use permit, one of the Commissioners verbally assaulted Mr. Scott Ices and the executive with the development company. Talk about poor taste and disrespectful behavior. With this said, I'm calling tonight for the immediate resignation of Commissioner Knapper. If there's no immediate resignation, I might suggest that all his constituents consider calling for an immediate recall.
Snowball's chance.
I've got a public, public comment myself.
Go ahead. I wanna respond to that, Charlie.
So, um, I was really excited when this solar project was first announced. I was thinking tax revenue for the county, the school districts, the colleges, or the college. We started doing some research right away. We learned that the nameplate capacity tax in, in the state of Nebraska is three thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars per megawatt. A four hundred megawatt, uh, solar, solar farm would, would bring about one point four million dollars in tax revenue. Nine hundred thousand dollars of that would go to moral public schools. That would then decrease the amount of state aid paid to moral public schools. So it was a wash for moral public schools. We also learned that the county's share of this nameplate capacity tax would be about four hundred thousand dollars, which is, um, would be four hundred thousand dollars a year, um, which is not nearly enough to rebuild St- Stiegel Road, um, after the truck, truck traffic, um, and the damage that would be done to that road with this project. The, uh, fire department out there would also be in a net negative position, having to purchase a new fire truck and build a one point five million dollar building to house that new fire truck to, to put out any fires associated with this, a fire at the solar farm or the lithium batteries there. The college would be a small benefactor and the cemetery district would be a very small benefactor of the additional tax revenue at the Citula, uh, solar, solar farm, um. Overall, it would be a net negative on the taxpayer here. Uh, probably cost the Scottsbluff taxpayer more money than what it would be generating. This, the nameplate capacity tax, um, was developed in the year two thousand two. It has not kept up with inflation. It has lost ground, and the nameplate capacity tax needs to be fixed by our legislature. That's all I got for now.
Good. Thank you, Charlie. Anybody else?
My name's Greg Brown, live at twelve hundred O Street in Gearing. Um, you coming up here, first you smirking at him asking for your resignation is ridiculous. That's not professional, hate to tell you. You going after that energy person was not professional by any stretch. Secondly, I've been come to my knowledge that you, you wanna talk about dereliction of duty. I believe you're supposed to be a liaison between some of these committee people around town. Maybe TCD, maybe tourism, all that. And my understanding is you don't even make those meetings. So, I mean, for you to think you're all knowledgeable in all these aspects, but yet choose not to show up and represent, what are you, what, what, what are you?
District three.
Yeah, district three, but yet you wanna stand up here and tell people how to do the job, micromanage all the time. I've only been to two meetings and I've noticed how much you nitpick, and I don't know if that's your duty. I think you need to represent district three, and what that would entail is maybe bring in, I think you wanted to run on economic development in the beginning, is what I was told. Well, an eight hundred and twenty-five million dollar project would be economic development, okay? Then you said you're for limited government. Well, you stubbing your nose in the face of those guys, that's not limited government. So, uh, if you're gonna be running, you should run under the same platform that you think you run under, which is socialism. Don't run as you're like you're staunch Republican, cause you're not. Use government in every af- fashion to stop progress. That goes for you, you, and you. You're a socialist, socialist, socialist. Cause you put, your guys think you guys are smarter than the free market system that could've came here and produced jobs. Four hundred and fifty jobs isn't gonna be a net benefit to our community when they build that?
No.
Are you kidding me?
I'm kidding you.
Know why?
Think about it.
Think about what?
Bring in four hundred and fifty jobs for what, six months?
Who cares if it's six months? Who cares if it's a year? Okay, guys, guys, folks. You know what? Cheyenne's close. Guess what? So we get half of that and we put them up. Guess what? I believe that goes to the occupational tax that, uh, would benefit her, right? Right? Tourism, right? You guys sit up here complaining cause you don't have money to do stuff, but then you, you, you spit in the face of progress. Yeah, absolutely you did. Get a book and read it. You guys, you, you never see, that's the first time you spoke, but you don't, you, you vote against it, but you don't have enough balls to say something up front?
Sir.
I mean.
Uh, I would rather you, you clean up your language a little bit. I'd appreciate, I'd appreciate that.
Cause I got, you, cause you think you're better than the free market. I got it in an email that you think you know more than the free market. And so do you. You always talk about, oh, I work these big projects. I've been on big projects. Eight hundred and twenty-five million, you never seen anything like that, I guarantee you. And not only that, you worried about the grassland below it? It's been proven that the grass grows better underneath those solar panels. Then the Prestons, which have been in existence that own that land, maybe four years before Scottsbluff County came into existence, and you spit in their face? They're the ones taking the risk, not you guys. It wasn't on county land. That's not for you guys to decide who decides when it's a private entity. It's free market. You guys all say you're for free market. No, you're not. When you step on people's toes like that, the problem you guys had is you couldn't put a feather in your hat. That's the only reason you guys are like, cause the Prestons do do, do diligence behind the scenes, come to you guys for a conditional use permit. When's the next time? You gonna start telling farmers what they can grow? You know, hold that, no, listen up, you listen.
No, you listen. You never, you never even asked me one question, but you've told me everything you think you know, but you haven't asked.
I do know what you've said in previous, in previous meetings. Okay, I'm gonna ask you.
Guys.
Are you bonded for your cleanup on your shithole when you come into Torrington?
Guys.
Are, who you are, cause you wanted Prestons to have a cleanup plan, right? You guys all wanted this decommission cleanup plan, right? Because they're gonna build this, but it was about, it was, it was two private entities doing the deal. It's not county land for cleanup. Why are you so concerned about it?
We got five vacant sugar factories within a fifty mile radius because they're full of asbestos. At the time, they told everybody that asbestos was good. Asbestos isn't good. You got a factory sitting here in Gearing, there's one in Miniatur, there's one in Baird.
What's that got to do with this?
The same thing.
Progress, yeah, you don't want it.
What do you think's gonna happen in fifty years?
Progress. In fifty years, I renew it and keep renewing energy.
You're probably gonna have grandchildren that'll probably be here to pay on that, that, that these.
To pay on that? What are you talking about, pay on it? It's a private entity.
Okay, guys, please.
To clean it up, what do you think?
Can we just keep it civil?
The company went and get, got a bond for you. You said you knew bonds, you didn't even know that they could get one for that. That's how much of an entity you are.
Well, you're really sharp.
Okay, guys, 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 alright, right, we're gonna, well, I think, yeah, we're gonna.
Here's the deal.
Public comment, not debate, Ken. It's public comment, period, not debate. The public is here to make the comment. I think we're done.
On the recall of him, not recall, but resignation of him immediately for what he did to that poor Citula Energy guy, that was pathetic. And I live in your district and I think it's pathetic how you represented us. Absolutely pathetic. So that's what my main comment was about, is that. Cause you're pathetic and you don't do what you're supposed to do. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Okay, guys, come on, please, please. Alright, with that, we'll cut off the, uh, public comments. Move on to, uh, the executive session. I'm gonna ask for an executive session for the purpose of personnel issue. Uh, in that session, it'll be the five board members, Lisa and, uh, uh, Mike, uh, back here. Mike Meister, I'm sorry. Alright. Can I have a motion, please?
I move that we go into an executive session.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Is there any other discussion? Record your votes. Okay, moving to executive session at, I have it up here, seven fifteen. And we'll just meet.
I'm kidding.
Okay, I need a motion to come back into regular session at eight.
I just need to roll call if you're okay with that.
Roll call then.
Meyer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Knapper?
Here.
Raisig?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Any decisions?
Uh, while we didn't make the decisions in there, we'll do it here.
Okay.
Uh, we're on the item of discuss, consider, uh, appointment of interim public defender, so I will entertain a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to table the public defender.
Okay.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of second. I'll entertain another motion, please.
I would move that we, um, appoint Mike Meister to fill that position until we, um, go through the application process and hire a new public defender.
Is there a second? Also, is there any further discussion?
I have to do verbal if you're okay.
That's fine. What's on the agenda?
Should be there.
Well, we just had two motions on the same thing, so if you give me a minute, I can copy it.
That's alright, just, just call the roll, that's fine.
Harris? Harris?
Yes.
Raisig?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Here, we'll get you back, I'll bet. Whatever. Thank you, Mike. Uh, move on to old business, clerk of the district court, window remodel. Is there a update on that anywhere?
Anything going on at all? Nothing's happened?
Okay. Uh, time clock, time clock plus and payroll process?
Is there any info on that one?
Oh, I can, let me, um, I told you about Claire's stuff already, and I have.
I need a mic, microphone, please.
Oh, sorry.
So does, does that effectively stop that process?
You know what? I can let you know when it's effectively stopped. As of today, it was still out there, but they told us they were disengaged from that product.
Do you think if they clicked on it, they could get anywhere with it then?
Probably.
Oh, okay.
But we really, as far as people interested, I think two or three people maybe said something, but then we kinda, we slowed them down and said, oh, put the brakes on it. Or people that talked to us, somebody talked to Angie Sock too, so, unless you guys, I don't think, I don't think Charlotte heard much. Okay, um, I do have a meeting scheduled Thursday with customer care from TCP to start building the integration to go into MIPS, and I've invited Kelly's staff, we're just on a phone call, and I did, I talked to Nick Smith from MIPS about it quite a bit today and I asked him to join us, so, I wanted you to know that.
Will you just relay what I told you the other day? Um, we've worked with Nick, um, trying to get the claims process done. We, um, I've worked with Nick when I was in the assessor's office already, and Charlotte and Nick, between the two of them, agree rather than, um, we did find out it's like ninety-five dollars an hour. I think that they can work telephonically for now and, and get things done. I did find out, I talked to Lisa my concerns about doing twenty-four pay periods versus twenty-six, and honestly, twenty-six would be more consistent and better for my office even, which I didn't realize, and I was like, well, then I'll just knock it off. Um, what else did I tell you? Is that, did I cover everything? Cause we're trying to get, she's working on getting the TCP to the MIPS. And Charlotte's working with Nick, so.
Yeah, there's a module that she's putting in place that MIPS has had that we have not taken advantage to automate claims, which is really pretty awesome. And we need to.
I've been pushing for that for a while now too, so.
We need to get our bigger groups involved in some of this decision-making because, I mean, we need to hear from detention and sheriff and bus.
I was gonna say, don't forget transit, please.
And tr- yeah, all of them that are invol- that are also involved, and they need to have their voice in this, that they have the bigger stakeholders, so make sure we know what their needs are.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, alright, move on to board and staff reports, Russ.
Well, road grades are still moving on. They, uh, got a new road grade release last week. They, uh, Island Roads, pretty much done. They were doing a little shoulderering on Island Road. Several calls, people thanking me how smooth it is. Have you guys driven it?
Yeah, I was, I did. It looks good.
Where we at on Stiegel? When they set up Stiegel on that north end?
Uh, that's gonna be, I think, June. I believe they're gonna rechip that again, they'll redo that June. I believe Steve's got.
I've, I've got.
You've had some complaints.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Yeah, well, we got it, we got it. He's gonna have to do a little more than he did last time. He was trying to put way too much lipstick on that pig last time. That's got us in trouble.
Yeah, I'm getting, I'm getting a ton of calls on that.
Okay, well, we, yeah, that should happen in June, that's supposed to be. That's when we're gonna start all the asphalt overlays. He's got eighteen miles of overlays for this year. You know, I've, I've only asked for fifteen a year and he's got eighteen miles this year. So with the two mile, uh, mill and re- overlay, they'll have, uh, twenty miles of road completed this year. We're moving along really well and we're not bonding anything yet. We're still paying things out of our own accounts. This is so much better than kicking that can and we're having to, you know, it, it just causes you to, uh, stop in progress even when you, when you bond all this stuff, so. We're moving along at a good pace.
Mike, you got anything?
Well, uh, between the meeting before I attended, uh, Nirmah Conference, City Center was really good. Attended a safety meeting, Region Twenty-two board meeting, veteran suicide breakfast meeting. Went to Region One Behavioral Health, they had a, uh, training on understanding first respondents and veterans. Uh, attended personnel board meeting, uh, and this, this last week, I attended a hot wash for the EOC. After action report on how we handle the, uh, uh, power outage. Uh, I attended a retirement dinner for Deputy Marshal John Goodman the other night. Uh, attended a quote the Bowler ceremony for five of our area veterans. And then I was asked to be the speaker on Memorial Day at Islam Cemetery. And then tomorrow night I have a stage board meeting in Bridgeport.
Okay, uh, last week I had five meetings, uh, pass it on that Region One is looking for a new location. Uh, they're actually, they actually went and toured the new building, uh, that the school system bought. They'll, I, I, what?
SWBC.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, and so they're, they're actively looking for someplace to go, so that building will probably be for sale. I don't, I don't know when that's all gonna happen.
Which building is it again?
The, the three-story building on Twenty-seventh that the school district bought.
Oh. They're gonna put it back up for sale?
No, 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 no. Where Region One is at now.
Oh.
They're, they're the only region that owns, they're the only region that owns their building. So, anyway, they're, they're, they're doing all of that, uh, they're, uh, they're all working from the office now. There's no more, other than if it's an illness or something, they have to work from home. Uh, and I'd asked them, one of the things they said, well, if this happens, we're gonna lose personnel. They said, how, how many have we lost? Well, we haven't lost any yet, so they're, they just have to, they just have to come to work. Not much, not much at the other meetings. I had a Kaplan meeting, uh, and I'll continue to do that until one of you guys decide to take it away from me, which I think is not going to happen. Uh, the, the other thing I would like to do soon is appoint some alternatives, alt- al- you know what I'm talking about? Second person to go to a meeting if you can't go would be the alternate.
Do you guys all have an extra list? I tried to make sure everybody?
That Kaplan one's an evening meeting, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, so we, and that's, and I, I, again, I'll take the, the blame for that. We should've done that on all those committees, cause some of those do need representation. Uh, and a lot of, other than the airport authority and housing are, uh, voting, your vote, your actual vote, voting member, making decisions.
So how can I help you guys get it reviewed so you know what you might be interested in?
I said, that's exactly what I said. The Housing Authority and the Airport Authority are ex officio members.
Right.
I think that's what I said, maybe it wasn't what I said.
I, I like, it sounded backwards, but it's good now. I, I like, it sounded back, but it's good now, it's all good.
And it's also quarter to nine. For twenty-nine, I've already had my first nap. Uh, yeah, the rest of them were just, we, I mean, normal meetings, nothing, nothing big going on.
Um, my primary meetings uh in the last week or so was Panhandle Public Health. Um, I think the agenda there was pretty routine, still reminding everyone that Kim Engel will be retiring at the end of the year. We're in the process of um, uh, figuring out exactly how we're gonna um find her replacement.
Were they going to find somebody and then she was gonna hang on and kind of show them the ropes for a while? I thought that's what you hoped.
We're hoping to maybe have the new person on by September, October, and then she would finish through the end of the year. And then my other one was Heartland Expressway and um, the uh mo- we held that uh meeting in conjunction with the State um Department of Roads Highway Commissioner meeting. That was Friday at the Civic Center. Um, and so they were the commissioners from all over the state. I think there's eight total, but Doug Leaf Green wasn't able to attend our, our re- our local one, he had had surgery or something. So, anyway.
What are we moving forward with at this time?
Well, there's two main things that uh Heartland Expressway talked about, and then I believe they talked about other things on their agenda in other areas, but two primary things, and that's um, the uh four-lane extension from Minoture to Angora Hill. Still working on that. They're in a, putting together, I think, some more environmental studies for the federal government. And they don't think they'll have that done until September or October, the way I understand.
So they'll go out to bid shortly after then?
Then after that, they'll finalize the, the design.
Oh.
There, until they get their okay from the federal government, um, they haven't finalized the design, yeah.
So then they'll start the engineering?
Um, yeah, and then uh, the other one that has come up um recently is Kimball. And, you know, the, the goal with Heartland Expressway is to, uh, the goal would be is to have four lane to the Colorado border. Um, I don't know that that'll happen, but they're at least trying to work on what would be called a super two-lane that goes at least to um the incinerator for right now.
That's about eleven mile, nine or a hundred.
Something like that, the Clean Harbors.
If there's enough traffic there, they could use a good piece of wood.
Well, and they're doubling the tra- getting ready to double the traffic.
Gonna be two incinerators.
Right, yeah, and so um, uh, I think that, that um, that Cotier wrote a really good letter um to the commissioners and explained it well. Rich Flores from Kimball was there and um, he explained things well. Person from Clean Harbors was there and explained their need. And um, I, I thought it was um really well received and um, yeah.
So, would this be in lieu of the Minoture one or in conjunction with?
I know that that was said, uh, uh, Mr. Erdman suggested that possibly, but um, the Heartlands uh goal would be that both of them.
Both of them go, okay.
And um, so, we did that morning, have a um, we hosted a, a reception for those folks and anyone really that came um with coffee and rolls that morning, the, an hour ahead of the meeting, and that was well received. I thought it gives a chance to meet people.
Thank you, Charlie.
So I did go to TCD last week. Um, the, the good news is there, um, they now have a grant writer on staff. And I told them that we were excited to hear that and would like to utilize their grant writer. Um, you know, there's um, a lot of opportunities that, that I think, you know, we, we need to capitalize on. Um, you know, there's been some infrastructure grants, there's been some um broadband grants, um, highway, bridge, um, even stuff for the courthouse that we've missed out on over the years. Um, just, everyone's just too busy to, to sit down and write a grant. You almost, we almost need a full-time grant writer to, to accomplish anything there. So, um, I, I encouraged them to, they, they were even thinking about bringing a second one on, onboard. Um, and we kinda see how this first one gets utilized. But I told them, with, with the ad, with the addition of their grant writer, Scottsburg County would be more than um willing to continue our partnership with them. Um, I told them I would discuss that with the board, but that was, that was my feeling. Um, because I think our, our return on investment there would, 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 I mean, it would pay more than dividends.
That grant writers is accessible to us?
Yes.
And we can tap into the grant writer?
Yes, yes. So right now, the grant writer's sitting there saying, who needs help? And so, we need to, you know, it, when there's opportunities from NACO or Nirma, um, we need to get those opportunities to him, so if we need to send him to Carney, he'll go to Carney and learn, you know, like we did, we sent some guys last summer to learn about some of the grant writing process, and I think came back almost overwhelmed, but the, you know, if this person could go down there and just focus on it, uh, make some contacts and, and that sort of stuff.
Doesn't, doesn't Pad have one as well? Or have you got?
You know, yeah, I, yeah, Pad, I don't know. I think that grant writer's probably pretty busy as, as it stands, but um, you know, they're, they're, they've, just because they've been established and going for a long time, he's, he's probably got multiple grants on the docket already, but this, this new grant writer is kinda, you know, waiting for activities, so um, I thought that was great to hear. Um, TCD's uh, they've, you know, new presidential year, they've got a new uh, um, you know, platform for that president, and that is to engage more counties, or sorry, engage more cities across the Panhandle. Um, wanna do that cautiously, I think, is, is the, the goal there, um, so that, you know, we're not competing for TCD services, but, but trying to find some sort of synergy there between all the communities, so that was encouraging. Um, and then NACO, we had our board of directors call with the governor last week, and that was really productive. Um, the counties have been having this monthly call with the governor now since the pandemic started, and it started with Governor Ricketts, and it's just continued with, with Governor Pillen, so that's been really nice. The relationship there is tremendous. Um, he's helping us with the um inheritance tax reform. Uh, he knows how important it is to us and he wants to help us find replacement revenue. Uh, so that, that means a lot to NACO and the NACO board and, and should mean a, a lot to all of us. Um, and just to kinda put things in perspective, how, how powerful or how, not powerful, but how, how helpful NACO is, they've, with the governor, they've had this call going on since the pandemic. And the League of Municipalities have had their first meeting with Governor Pillen since he's been in office, so um, you know, he came to address NACO when he was governor-elect, and he's continued to, to meet with us monthly, and it's just been a tremendous relationship so far, so um, I think that's all I got.
Okay, we'll start staff, Lisa, do you have anything more? Troy? I, I need to visit with you for two seconds before you go home, if you would. Darla?
Who are you appointing?
Darla, I'm sorry. Ashley? Heather? Brenda, do you have anything else?
I could do a copy of our new tourism brochure.
You got a new one, huh?
Yep.
Well, I like that better.
Thank you.
Shows where we live.
And that's it.
I don't remember, I don't remember what the old one looked like, but I'd like this one too.
Um, it was a picture, it, it was a similar picture, it's like two people hiking on the front.
It was saddle rock with two hikers.
Yeah, interactive, which is always good, but.
Alright, have anything else, Brenda?
No.
That's it? Alright.
Well, it's forty state golf.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, tomorrow's not looking great. Might turn into an eighteen hole tournament that on Wednesday. Um, great comments today from the kids and the boys and the coaches. They are excited to be here. Um, we just hope that, I don't know, the weather during the next couple of hours.
Doesn't look good.
Yeah, it doesn't look.
Doesn't look good at all.
But, you know, surprises, um, we did one then on Wednesday. Uh, the smash shack will be open and they have the best smash burgers you've ever had in your life, so you can come up to the golf course for lunch.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We would love to see you.
Kelly?
Made it through election.
You did. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Turnout wasn't good.
I did, I, I did have an incident over at the church, uh, off Westmore area.
For election?
Yeah.
Election incident?
I walked out, I voted, walked out, and here's two young, young gentlemen. I'm guessing twelve, thirteen years old, I don't know, pulled the signs out of the yard.
Did you make them put them back?
Well, I, I, yeah, the election ones, vote here, and then you have to have ID, that sign. And I got about halfway up the block, I got in my truck and I pulled up and I pulled off to the side and I pulled my camera or my phone up, you know, like I was taking their picture. I said, you guys got about five minutes to take those signs and put them back. And the, and the one kid got mouthy, the other one was scared. The other one was mouthy, he had this, this big Afro thing and he was gonna, he thought he was, he thought he was something special. And I said, I'm not kidding you. I said, I'll have, I'll have a, 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 a policeman here in about five minutes. I said, that's county property. You can't do that. And the one kid picked it up and the other one gonna help. I said, you grab that one and go to, and I fall and I drove real slow as he went down to the, down to the church. And the, and the one kid stuck it in, he just kinda laid the, the plastic thing over it, and I said, no, that's not how it was when you pulled it out. Put it back like it's supposed to be.
Thanks, Ken.
Well, he was just gnawing on me like something, whatever. And then, and then they, they went over and they took off running as fast as they could. But, uh, anyway, okay, uh, we've already discussed legislation, I don't think there's anything, so let's go home.